Call the meeting to order, please. Meeting there, everyone? This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting for Thursday, December 18th, 13, time is 7:00 P.M. Please call them.
President Self.
Here.
Trustee Self.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Valerie.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Collins. Interim Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Village Attorney Lena.
Also here.
Also President Village Book Haley.
We have a forum. You'll please drive for the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you to those who are here in attendance with us tonight and to those watching at home. If you would like to make a comment during the meeting, just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that the votes at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up this evening, our presentations in public comment. Our first item of business is a streetscape update by our community development director, Ms. Sonia Apt.
All right, this is going to be kind of a recap and update. So, let's begin. All right. Can everybody see? Okay. All right, this all kind of started back in 2013 with our CMAP plan, which was adopted in April. As part of that plan, there was a recommendation that we needed to enhance the street appeal of the downtown. This included completing the street canopy, enhancing the sidewalk landscaping, improving landscape and screening of parking lots, developing consistent street furniture, and improving lighting conditions. Later in 2013, in July, our village engineer recommended that we apply for the ITEP grant that opened up back in June. In July, we also met with a design firm to discuss the possibility of applying for the grant and then helping us with that. During that meeting, they said that they would charge us $10,000 to submit that grant application. Meanwhile, Burke told us they would do it for free, and we went ahead and had Burke work with us to submit that application. It was submitted in August of 2013. In April of 2014, it was announced that we won the ITEP grant award for our streetscape project. And in June, we selected Christopher Burke Engineering to do the design and engineering for the streetscape project with a peer review by Gibbs Planning Group. So then we begin the design phase. In June, Burke began designing the streetscape. And in July, representatives from Burke and myself scheduled and attended a kickoff meeting with IDOT for the project. In August, Burke finally came to us with their first design and submitted that to us for our review. Trustees were informed and invited to review the plan and provide feedback to myself. In addition, the chairs of the commissions and the chamber were invited to a meeting for a presentation of the draft plan and to give us some feedback on it. This is the draft plan, the first draft that was presented at that meeting. We had some feedback regarding the loss of parking, the use of colored concrete, size and materials of planters, et cetera. And we took that feedback back to the design team at Christopher Burke and came up with -- they came back with the second draft in October, late September, early October. So these are some pictures from that design. This is where the curvilinear design was introduced. This version was presented to the Preservation Commission, it was presented to the EDC, and I believe the Landscape Advisory Commission for their feedback. So that was early October. Some of the feedback from the preservation and the LAC and the EDC concerned the curvilinear design, saying it was interesting, perhaps a bit too contrived or too busy. There was feedback on the planters as well, looking for perhaps different materials and perhaps a design that was a little bit more simple. That plan was also submitted to Gibbs Planning Group for their review. They were looking at it for both design and potential impact on commerce and retail in our downtown. Overall design, they said, offers a pleasant and walkable streetscape. The curvilinear design should encourage pedestrian movement along the storefronts. Provided for a good variety of outdoor seating. They recommended adding more trees. They supported our keeping of on-street parking. That was one of the changes that was in that plan as on-street parking came back. They also stated that the historic character of the downtown as a whole is a strength and should be maintained. Enter Phase Three. So this draft came in also later in October. It incorporated preservation and LACs, some of their recommendations. Pavers were changed. We went to a more traditional paver than what was shown previously. These two different colored bricks were removed and what was just one color of brick. Also, limestone was introduced for the planters, and the curves that were previously in the plan were softened a bit. This went to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their feedback and review in late October. They gave us some feedback, again, on the planters and on the curvilinear design. Some of their suggestions included eliminating the prairie-style planters, looked for something for the planters to be a little bit more free-form, a little bit more organic. They also stated that they felt there was too many planters, and they wanted something that was more distinctly Riverside incorporated into the design. So we get to the fourth draft. Taking in the Planning and Zoning Commission's feedback, prairie planters were removed, larger free-form planters were incorporated into the design, water tower planters were incorporated into the design. And this is what was presented at the Town Hall meeting that was back in November. So this is what was presented at that meeting. Christopher Burke came in and did their big presentation. This is some of the site furniture that was presented at that meeting as well. We got some feedback from the Town Hall meeting, both at the meeting and after. Major concerns seemed to be the use of pavers, either their safety, the use of concrete pavers versus clay pavers, and also the color. Another issue was no crosswalk by St. Mary's. Lot of talk about the concrete ribbon, the use of brushed concrete, that it was perhaps a bit too modern. Again, similar things to the design. We got some feedback that it was too modern or too contrived. Feedback on planters. Some people didn't -- some people liked the water tower planters. Some people thought they were a little bit too niche. Some people still thought there was too many planters. Some people thought the planters were too big. Had feedback on the bike rack, saying they were too modern. There was some pushback, again, about the removal of parking by the cleaners, which was the one area that we did have parking still removed from. Some comments that there was not enough trees in the plan, and also that this was a misinterpretation of Olmsted principles. Based on that feedback, we've made some revisions. Been working with the design team at Christopher Burke over the past month. The materials have been reduced. We've gone to just pavers and limestone. The concrete ribbon has been changed to a paver ribbon. We've added a crosswalk over by St. Mary's. We found a place where we think we can safely get people across. We've added back two parking spaces. They would be in front of where Empanadas is. That was the most we could fit in there and still maintain the required lane widths for IDOT rules and keep things ADA accessible for a sidewalk. We did end up removing the water tower style planters. We lowered the free-form planters, so they're all about 18 inches tall now. And they are all limestone. We changed the round planters to free-form planters. We revised the gateway feature, and we've incorporated, saved some additional existing trees, and are working with the forester on tree selection. So here is one picture of the revisions. So you can see this is the Village Center corner. So this is the revised gateway element. We've shrunk down the focal point seating planter there, so it is only about 12 or 13 feet in diameter. It's been pushed out a little bit. As you can see, it's all limestone, so all the brick features were removed from it. You can see the more free-form planters that replaced the circular planters that were along Long Common before. And again, those were changed to all limestone with a limestone cap, and they are much shorter, so they're only about 18 inches tall. The seating one is a little bit taller. That centerpiece is going to be maybe 22, 24 inches tall. You've got the back there. This is a detail of the paving with the pavers for the ribbon. So you can see this is just a little bit more subtle of a pattern. They're using a 10-by-10 paver for the ribbon. Below it will still be the concrete that will separate the two different substrates for the permeable versus the impervious pavers. And that will also help with construction, construction phasing. So those are kind of the details we have for the new plan. Moving forward, kind of where we go from here. At this point, the village is not using the grant money for the design. So there is no local agency agreement or anything that we have to do with IDOT for this design phase. We had our kickoff meeting with IDOT back in July. That's where we combined the STP with the ITEP grant. So the STP grant is the one for the resurfacing of Burlington from Long Common all the way out to Harlem. We combined that grant that we had received back in 2012 with this ITEP grant that we just received this year. They went over, outlined the requirements for submittal as we began our design phase, and let us know what the requirements would be due to the fact that we are a historic community, and they supplied us with our letting schedule, and we moved forward with the design phase. Now going forward, some of the criteria we have to meet here is we have a Fed/IDOT meeting in early January that we need to do, and we have to get also our pre-final plans submitted in January as well. So in order to get the June letting with the state, which means that's when it goes out for bid with the state, we have to get our pre-final plans in by January 15th. Then final plan specifications and the estimate, along with a draft agreement with the village, needs to go to the state, to IDOT, by March 16th. Then from there, April 10th is when the full final construction engineering, as well as the joint agreement, which would be that local agreement here with the village, have to be submitted by April 10th for us to be on that June 2015 letting. If we do not make that June letting, construction will not commence in 2015. So if we don't make that deadline, the project is going to get pushed off till construction happening in 2016. Because as we push that date further back, weather conditions and stuff are not going to be there for us to be able to start construction. So it would be -- construction phase would not start until 2016. As for what a sunset clause is, the funding for the ITEP grant is secured for us through September of 2016. So we have to have this let by September of 2016. That's kind of our final deadline. For the STP grant, we can -- that was granted back in 2012 and has now been partnered with this, so this can be pushed back along with the ITEP grant. However, that funding is as it's available. So if we do not start construction in 2015, those funds will be reallocated, and then they would have to be allocated again to us in 2016. So depending on what the budget is and where we are in line, presumably we'd get it reallocated, but there is always the chance that, depending on what the budget is for 2016, what we would get allocated for the STP funds if we get to that point. So, that is kind of the recap and update to where we are today with the plan. And we continue to take in feedback and try to tweak things as we move towards getting engineering plans submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Apt. Any questions from the board or Ms. Apt?
You know, could you just explain what letting is?
Oh, letting is the bidding process, so the state is actually going to be the one that puts the projects out for bid. So that is, it's a bid letting for contractors to bid on these projects. So we're going to let the state take care of that process as opposed to doing it in-house. So they will put it on a schedule, everybody will be notified, and then interested parties can pick up that information and submit their bids by the designated date.
But they, excuse me, Sonia, but the letting means they'll advertise it in June, and then the bids have to come back, they have to be reviewed, and then they have to be awarded.
I believe the advertisement actually happens before that. Oh, okay. So the actual, I think, due date for the bids is that June date.
Okay, but then when the bids come back, they still have to review them?
Yeah, then they will review them and select.
Yeah, so it's not as if the award would take place in June?
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Apt. Excuse me. I have a bit of a cold here. Next up is public comment. Would anyone like to support Mr. Buttermer? You're already up, I guess that means you. I don't want to delay.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Buttermer, and one thing I'm not is a designer, and I'm not a landscape architect or an architect. But one thing I am is a person that's been very concerned, in a positive way, about our business district for some 20 years now. We started the Our Town Project years ago, and we brought to that a different perspective. A lot has happened in our business district, and a lot that's very positive. And I applaud this board for going out and basically getting us a million bucks to move it a step forward. In my presentation, which is a lot of it's visual, you'll see a lot of improvement. You'll see that the village has done some things, the shopkeepers have done many things, and volunteers have done many things. But one thing that you'll see is that Riverside, and we all know this, but Riverside is not corporate America. We've got a different breed of cat with shopkeepers and unique storefronts, and that's not my presentation, that's something else. But they're working on it, and I've got another minute here to go. So I was saying, it's not corporate America. Most of us leave corporate America downtown, and we leave it at the regional malls. And we have something very, very, very special and unique. And we come here, leaving all that elsewhere, to celebrate our families and the uniqueness of the village. So this starts out with the grand scheme of Riverside, the comprehensive plan, and it starts out at Out at Harlem Avenue, which was the main gateway to town as designed by Olmsted. So it takes you on a tour, and along the way it shows you some principles of the Main Street programs, which is what the Our Town Project was and is. And it shows examples of how those principles apply to things that have been done, and it identifies four or five opportunities. They're in green, opportunities for the future. So I'm not here to criticize or to support the streetscape per se, but I want to take on a little tour, because one of the biggest challenges we have is setting the priority for all of these things. There's some great music. If you make a bow and nut, I won't have to sing along. So please read as fast as you can, so I don't have to delay you off. Remember the old Hammaco station? And how many years that was neglected? Well, here it was with an adaptive reuse. So that was an awful lot to throw at you. There's probably two weeks of discussion on all of those items. And I thank you very much for, you know, nine minutes of dedicated paying attention without the beautiful music. I posted on the, one of the earlier stories that came up, that my biggest concern to go back to streetscape is that we have a comprehensive plan, and that doing one block may be the way to execute, but I think we need to have the plan before we choose that for the execution. We haven't talked about things like life cycle cost, replacement cost, how we're going to do the similar improvement on the four other areas. And I'm all for, I've been dying for the day when you guys bring in a million bucks to fix something. But if we truly have more time to do it, I think we can take it to an even higher level. But maybe more importantly, if we can't, because some of the elements of it are, I think, are outstanding, but at least be consistent throughout. And that's what I ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buttermer. Anyone else? Mr. Luttrell? Mr. Lutford?
You're up. I'm becoming a regular, so I'm Tom Lutford from District Nine. Watch the movie if you question where I'm talking about. We don't have to state our addresses anymore, I think, so I have a little fun with that. I was really glad to see the report tonight because it laid to rest some of the concerns that we've had and that we've been operating under. And that is, we are at the, I'm not, I don't need the video. We've been operating under the idea that this is the 11th hour and 59th minute, and if we don't do this right now, that we're going to lose it. I think now with the report that we heard, with the feedback from IDOT and their representatives, we are not going to lose this funding. It is not the 11th hour and 59th minute. In fact, the clock starts in April. So what I'm hoping we can do is get a comprehensive design for our central business district. And I'm glad Jerry had a, the presentation. I'm going to hire him to do my kids' homework in high school now, and they have to do PowerPoints, maybe a marketing program. But it's, it's a comprehensive thing. We can't just design these two blocks and put it in and say, great. At the last, two meetings ago, Pat, you said, I'm concerned we're going to lose it. I just want to put shovels in the ground. But now that concern has been alleviated. We do have the time. The, the schedule we saw for the letting in June is tight. But then there's a letting in July, there's a letting in August, there's a letting in September. This kind of stuff, ITEP has never once pulled funding in the entire history of the program. While some people might say, well, they could, well, I could grow an antler out of my head. I really could. It has never happened that a human being has grown an antler out of their head, but it could happen. I'm not willing to not buy hats based upon that supposition. So we really do need to stop, do this right. We are not going to lose this million dollars. There is no chance, maybe a snowball's chance in that netherland down there, that we could lose it. But there is no reasonable understanding that we can lose this funding. Therefore, we need to do this right. I understand, Mike, you said, we got to do it, we got to do it, we got to hit this out of the, we, you don't have to hit a home run, but we got to do it. Well, we're assured we're going to do it now. It's not going away. Doug, you know, you were fighting, you said, you know, I'm working with ITEP. It's not going to happen. It never happened. Why would they pull it? I understand the concerns that were expressed, and I appreciate them. As a village trustee, it is your responsibility to do what is right for the village. And under those circumstances where you were operating under the threat that we are going to lose this funding, I understand the discussion that was had. But now that that has been lifted off our shoulders, and we do have time to do it right, and to get some outside input, maybe some other designs, maybe broaden the scope of it, maybe ask Burke, what is their inspiration? Where did they get their inspiration from? We never hear that discussion when they're talking about their design. Truly, on a fifth revision, you're designing a camel, to go back to two meetings ago. This is no longer a vision of a talented landscape architect that draw inspiration from Jenny's buildings or Olmsted's historic downtown. This is a camel. We've taken out parking in front of the dry clearing, we put it back in. We put in the Coca-Cola swoosh, now we're putting in brakes. Every concern that has been expressed has been responded to. And real good design takes those concerns, it gets rid of most of them because they're uninformed. I mean, I have never professionally gotten a chance to redesign a project a fifth time. By the third time, they're saying, all right, Lutford, you're not getting it, maybe someone else. So that's great. Their taste may be different than mine, I may specialize in one thing where they want another. But going through five, six revisions like this shows me, as a design professional, I've been doing it for 20 years, half my day is in design meetings. It is what I do. I will repeat, if we're talking pensions, I'd be at home, watching on couch with the kids. But this is my niche, this is what I know about. So we really have an opportunity with this million dollars to hit this out of the park. We need to, we need to have Wayfair signage. The single most important aspect to a central business district redevelopment is the Wayfair signage. Again, I'll hearken back to the Grange. The Grange didn't do much, they put in some great signage, put in parking, and then that's about it, put in some cannibal pots. They didn't spend the money on the pavers. They didn't, we're spending $250,000 of our own money on this. Honestly, I'd say let's put that towards incentivizing business to come to town. Let's put $100,000 towards build-out, interest-free loans for businesses to come here and do their build-out. Put $100,000 towards a marketing campaign. Put $50,000 towards consultants to write a business plan for these people. This project is not going to move the needle. The central business district is not going to increase their gross margins or their grosses because of this project. If we put money towards helping them increase their business, I guarantee after this is done, we're going to have the same morbid downtown, it's just going to look nicer. There's not going to be, Riverside Foods is not going to increase their gross. RK Jewelers is not going to sell more jewelry. The Maytag store isn't going to prepare more appliances because we're doing this. So we really should take the time, we have the time. It won't take long, and maybe put the project back for a month, maybe two months, even three months. But now that we know we're not in danger of losing the funding, we have the opportunity to really do this right. I would say, design Guthrie Park, design this park, and then apply those design elements to that grubby commercial district that Olmsted ever wanted anyway. We don't need to design two blocks. We need to design our look, our feel, our elements, you know? Put all that stuff together, here's the design, and oh, we can put the paving patterns up north. We can use the same light fixtures up north. But we really need to have this, take the time and do this right. So I encourage you guys to slow it down, issue an RFP, invite other entities in here, and get other design concepts. I have a book from the First and Forest Design Competition that the EDC put together. There are five entries, and four were radically different from each other. Two looked a lot alike, and they were along the lines of this design. The others were radically different. And some were crazy, they were designed flights of fancy, some were awesome. So you never know what you'll get. But right now, what we know we have is a camel. So I would urge you guys to slow it down, open it up, and do this right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lutford. Anyone else like to, Ozman?
My name is Aberdeen Marshes, and I'm here tonight on behalf of a Burlington Streetscape Committee that was formed by the Board of the Frederick Law Olmsted Society. The Frederick Law Olmsted Society is dedicated to sustaining Olmsted's vision for Riverside for generations to come. Following the presentation of the Burlington Streetscape Project to the public on November 13th, 2014, the society was asked its position on the project. Though Olmsted's writings do not specifically address Riverside's business district, the body of his work demonstrates a timeless elegance of design which, in which details are subordinate to the whole. So in the context of our Olmsted Design Village, it is our opinion as a general matter that hardscape should not detract or distract from landscape. The society has been advised that the design presented to the public on November 13th is preliminary, and that not only are the village and the design and engineering firm open to changing design elements, that they have many, made many of these changes already. The society has also been advised that the plans to be submitted to IDOT in January of 2015 are for gross pricing purposes, and that the design may still be modified and refined until the project is let for bid, which we understood to be estimated for July of 2015. It is our opinion that provided that the design process continues in a way that is responsive and transparent, and design details do not compete for visual attention, the results will be beneficial. The society has formed a committee composed of experienced professionals, two architects, a civil engineer, a landscape historian, and a preservationist, to review future versions of the plans for the streetscape as they become available, and to assist the village in providing timely and meaningful input into this very important project. Our input will be most effective if it's incorporated at critical design junctures, particularly those leading up to the rough budget, preliminary design, and final design submissions to IDOT. We thank the village for its sensitivity to constructive design comment thus far, and look forward to continuing this dialogue as the project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ozman. Mr. Gallus?
Alex Gallus, 3234, South Harlem. Good evening, Miss President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you and the village board on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. The Riverside Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to promoting the retail and professional communities of Riverside. As part of this mission, the chamber believes in a vibrant business district that is welcoming to both residents and visitors alike. Burlington Street, which is the center of our central business district, has grown worn over the years and has been in long need of major renovations. The chamber was delighted when the Village of Riverside received funding through the Illinois Surface Transportation Program and the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program to resurface Burlington Street and renovate its central business district landscape. Members of the chamber have worked alongside the Village of Riverside in developing the design of the Burlington Streetscape from its beginning, and strongly supports this vital project to move forward towards completion. The chamber is especially pleased that careful attention has been given to the needs of Riverside's current and prospective businesses in the design of the plan. We are pleased that the process has been and will continue to be open and receptive to public input from both Riverside residents and the businesses. Indeed, the result of this public input can be seen in the many improvements made to the plan as it has evolved over the past several months. It is the chamber's hope that the Illinois Department of Transportation will approve the project early next year so the village can move forward with construction in 2015. The residents and businesses of Riverside have been waiting very long for an opportunity like this and are excited to get started. Our businesses, and more importantly, our customers, deserve a downtown that complements the beauty and legacy of Riverside. The Riverside Chamber of Commerce firmly believes that the Burlington Streetscape resurfacing and essential business district streetscape project does exactly that, and is a major step forward in Riverside's bright future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallus. Further comments? Mr. Renon?
My name is Greg Randall. I live at 189 Herrick. I currently also have a business that we've moved in above Quincy Street to Stilley. And I came here specifically tonight to kind of set the record straight about one of my comments that was quoted in the paper about this project effectively appearing like a student project. I still stand behind that statement at that time. It was no way to belittle or becond and insult the engineers or designers and say that they were incompetent. In fact, since then, the improvements that we've seen made in the design, I think actually tells us that they are actually professionals, they are listening, their ego isn't above our concerns, and that we should stick with them, because I do think they are listening, and it's our best opportunity to get a good and lovable downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Further comments?
My name is Jane Archer, resident of Riverside. I know that people don't like change. I have been a member of the New Jersey Planning Board in Montgomery Township, New Jersey. I've been where you guys have been. I've heard a lot of testimony from professionals and from residents for and against various projects. I brought some examples of some of the things that I've sat in on. But what concerns me the most here is the lack of process. I hear a lot of words, I watched the video of the last meeting you guys had, and there's a big, there's a huge push to get this approved as is without what I would consider a design process, where we, we look at what we, the problems are that we were asking them to solve, they come back to us with a design, and hopefully with a concept. I don't really see much of a concept. And then we ask them, how does this design meet the concept? This is part of the design process. These are words that you guys may not be familiar with because it's part of the training you get if you go into architecture or landscape architecture or some of those visual fields. And then I actually wrote down some things you guys were saying at the last meeting. You say you want to get it right, but yet you don't want to go through this process. You want something timeless. And a lot of the people who are coming before you, we have a lot of talent in Riverside, a lot of the people coming before you are saying, in terms of getting it right, that this design falls well short of what we could have. The doesn't, the whole design doesn't need to be scrapped. We just want to sit down and have a dialogue with them to see about, say, instead of having three different kinds of planters, can we have a unifying kind of planter for downtown Riverside? Because it looks like three different people sat down and said, well, I want this, I want regular planting beds, oh, I want, you know, a little planter here, and I want, you know, elevated planters here. It just, it doesn't make sense. It's not unified, it doesn't, it just leaves questions in my mind. And then there's also concern about sort of a piecemeal approach, designed by committee, talking about designing giraffes or whatever it was. And yet, at the same time, we hear you guys putting in ideas like, how about Bluestone? How about if we simplify it? Oh, simplify it, that'll, that'll make it a better, that'll make it more palatable to us. But that's not a design process. And that is, you guys are a committee, and you guys are putting in the design ideas here. The other thing is, I've heard that people have been calling you guys up and saying, you know, I have an issue with this aspect of the design that Burke presented, or I have an issue with that aspect, and you guys take it out without any meeting as to whether that might actually have been a good idea or not. I know that there's, there have been a lot of complaints about this river of concrete, and I did point out in the landmark online that I thought for Riverside, that made a lot of sense, if it was a little more random, because the river is a huge part of the inspiration for Olmsted's Riverside. It actually, it fits with the curvilinear streets. I mean, there's a reason why it works. People may not like it, they don't have to like it, but if it's there for a reason in design terms that makes sense, then it can be part of the design. Does that make any sense? So anyway, going back. So Patricia, you said that you can't please everyone, and I don't think that's what the design process is about. The design process is about working through, seeing if you, if you're meeting your objectives for the design, not just for the infrastructure, but... for the design, not just for the infrastructure, but for the aesthetic aspect of it as well, and whether it meets the concept. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. And you're at a bit of a disadvantage. You came in after Zapp did the update of the design, so I'd encourage you to look at the latest iteration because of a lot of the things that you just mentioned are addressed, I think, in that design. Further comments? Ms. Payne?
Hello, I'm Jackie Payne, and I'm a former chair of the LAC. I'm currently president of the library board here, and I'm also a master gardener with University of Illinois Extension. And I am obviously more of a plant person than a hardscape person. So it really takes a lot to get me excited about hardscape, but when I went to the presentation in November, I was absolutely ecstatic because I think Burke did an excellent job. And as I said, hardscape is really not my thing. Takes the place of too many plants. I think the ribbon element is outstanding because it references a couple of different things. First of all, it references Riverside's history and Olmsted's original design with our curvilinear streets. At the same time, it references the river, which is a unique asset in this community. There are communities who would kill to have a river running through it. Unfortunately, since Olmsted's time, as you all know, we've kind of let plants encroach on the river, which is one place I would take them out. The other thing that struck me, that with this ribbon element, particularly in the concrete, it would be a fabulous marketing tool because everybody, everybody has bricks. Bricks are everywhere. But with the ribbon element, it would set our pavement apart from Forest Park, from Oak Park, from La Grange, from every community that has brick sidewalks. And it would make people remember the uniqueness of Riverside, because we do have many unique characteristics. And it would definitely say river to visitors from out of town. I also want to commend the village board and staff on the process they have engaged in, in bringing this plan to fruition. I think there have been quite significant number of hearings and opportunities for public input, and you know, in Riverside, this is not always the case. In past eras, which are probably best forgotten, a lot of the landscaping and the plantings were done by ad hoc committees of self-appointed experts. I think the village has done an outstanding job in encouraging residents to express their opinion. However, at the same point, and I would agree with the previous speaker, you know, some, hardly anything successful is designed by a committee. And I do think there's a time when you need to stop and just say, this is the plan, and this is what we're going to do. And I think, let's see, that's about all I had to say, except one of the things that struck me tonight, you know, in my term as chair of the LAC, my goal was to start a new, to re-landscape the CBD. And I got through the first barrier of Olmsted's plan for the CBD, which we all know now is non-existent, but which was professed to be true for years and years. Okay. Then I had quite a few comments about the plan, about the plants, about the whole thing, some very contentious public hearings. But we powered through that, and we actually got something done. Well, some of the same people who are complaining about the current Burlington plan were complaining about my plan seven or eight years ago. So there's something here that defies logic, and I think really, as a village, we need to pull together and get this done, and give our businesses here something that sets them apart from the other surrounding communities. And perhaps one of the tenets of transit-oriented development, which applies here, is you create a pleasant streetscape. We really need a pleasant, an appealing streetscape, something that appeals to the eye, to lure more businesses and more visitors to town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Further comments? Ms. Claude?
Hi, I'm Teri Lynn Colloden. For those of you who don't know me, I've been a Riverside resident for 24 years. I've been an avid landscape hobby gardener for 20 years. For the last 10 years, I've been involved in the gardens at Ascension Lutheran Church, and also the gardens at Ames School. I worked with the Burke Company when they re-landscaped Ames School and also Hauser School. Then back in 2008, I began in LAC. I was on the LAC for two terms. However, the most pressing thing I noted in my 24 years here in Riverside was in 2009, an Eagle Scout came to me and said that he was embarrassed of our central business district, that he thought our post office was showing a lack of respect for the flag and for government office. Now, to see an 18-year-old say that was pretty startling, and it really kind of awakened me to the idea that unfortunately, sometimes our downtown is looked at as morbid, as Mr. Lepfer put it, and unkempt and uncared for. And that's exactly the opposite of what Riverside is. Riverside is a small community that can build on its cohesiveness and come together to make something that really, you know, something that really does say, yes, Riverside is a place you want to come and raise your children. In 2008, while I was on the LAC, after that Eagle Scout had completed his project, I worked with Jackie Payne and the LAC members, and we formed something called the Riverside Springs Ahead. And that was a volunteer initiative that came together to harvest and plant seedlings in the central business district. In 2010, we planted over 2,000 perennials in the central business district in an attempt to bring some life to the downtown, to have a sustainable plan. The downsides to that were that obviously, it's difficult to clear snow without sometimes plowing off the top of the planters, so you're constantly, you know, refilling. Also, obviously, they are more prone to drought and to salt, so we're constantly battling those. And I've had a real loyal group of volunteers. We had over 100 volunteers on our first planting, and we've had a good 20 to 30 that have helped replant the downtown area at least twice in the last four years we've filled in plants. I also had seven community organizations that supported this endeavor in the central business district. There was the Garden Club, the Chamber of Commerce, the Junior Women's, two churches in town, the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and the Olmsted Society all supported the replanting of perennials in the central business district. So they really did pull together. I think that the, the brickwork in the landscape design is very reminiscent of the Olmsted cobblestones, and I think it's ironic when people say they don't want the street to detract. I think cobblestones and pavers are very, you know, in line, similar elements, and I think they're much more in keeping with an Olmsted design than an aggregate cement. And I think that the timing that the village is trying to achieve going forward with a significant grant, which will give us much more firm money, and synchronizing with the streetscape so that we're not disrupting the central business district twice, so that we can get it done all at once. I think that is the urgency. Yes, there could be a situation where they could delay, and our funding might not be pulled, but if anyone who's worked in corporate America knows, when the economy's bad, when government officials change, anything can happen, and it's very easy to lose funding. I mean, I don't know anyone in Riverside who hasn't been impacted by corporate changes, by budget cuts. In fact, it's almost culture in many businesses that at a certain time of year, and you say, well, if it's not spent by now, it's going to be gone. And especially when you have a significant disruption in government changeover and officials. I think the raised planters, I really do like that they modified the change and that they're more free-form. I think the raised planters will significantly increase the sustainability of the perennials that are planted in them. We've had extremely good success at the triangle that's by Dr. Coffey's office, and actually, my son was responsible for organizing the planting in the Riverside Bank median strip. And that is only in its second year and is doing phenomenally well despite the snow, the salts, and everything else. But it's in a, even the six-inch curb allows for a little bit of shelter, and if you choose drought and salt-tolerant plants, they will come back year after year, as long as you don't grate them off with a snow plow. So thank you for letting us have this community input. I think obviously, six months of input and changes is a lot, and thank you for your patience. I do think Riverside has a tremendous amount to offer. I hope that the families coming in will see us as a welcoming community with good schools and not let some of the political dissension detract from all the good that happens here in the village. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Claude. Further comment?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Just to clarify, my dissension is not political. It is professional. We've heard from two professionals in this town. One is me, one is Burke. I'm asking you to have a couple more professional opinions. I love all the community involvement, but a lot of times, it gets bogged down because of it. We've heard a lot tonight from people saying, here's my opinion, here's my opinion, I like this, I don't like that. That's not what we need at this point. We need more professional opinions, and we need to take this out of the political realm. Please.
Ms. Archer?
This is a brief comment about the materials that could be used. We've talked about pavers and limestone caps and aggregate. Mike Collins actually told me that the original sidewalks in Riverside were red granite aggregate, and you can still see a few of the squares around, so not to, you know, just remove it because we think it's a modern concept.
Further comment?
Hearing none. Thank you very much for your input. Moving on now to reports to the village officers. First up is the village president's report, and I guess just on the heels of the comments we just heard, I just want to say, and I think I speak for the entire board, how much we appreciate the input that we received from the very beginning of this process. It's been seven months now since the design process began. We had a significant amount of input following the town hall meeting, and I think you saw the results of that input tonight, and the plan that is increasingly elegant and simple and sustainable. So we look forward to that continued input and to continuing to improve the plan as it moves forward. Most significantly, what I wanted to say tonight, I had the opportunity yesterday, Jill and I went to the memorial for Judy Bart Tepinka, a dear friend and a dear neighbor. It was, it was a beautiful event. Governor Quinn was there, Governor Lex Rowner, former Governor Thompson. There were a lot of wonderful things said about a very wonderful lady. But one of the things that I personally left with was, and this was kind of a recurring theme, you know, we live in a time when politics is often characterized by posturing and partisanship. And what I think that we all long for are leaders who are genuine, leaders who are sincere, and who want to put the good of the public ahead of any kind of personal aspiration or any kind of personal party. And we lost a leader like that when we lost Judy Bart Tepinka. Judy represented, to my mind, all that is good in a public servant. She was honest, she was dedicated, and she was fiercely devoted to doing what was best for the average person, the everyday citizen in Illinois. Never once, never once would she put political gain or party ahead of doing what she thought was right. She could do politics as well as anybody, but when it came down to it, it was the people of Illinois that she served. Her personal accomplishments were, of course, extraordinary. The papers have done a great job the last week of chronicling those. But for those of us here, those accomplishments in some ways pales compared to that other Judy, the Judy that was our neighbor, that was our friend. And her lack of pretension, her down-to-earth humor, I mean, she could not walk into a room without making that room better, happier, more lively, more entertained, more energetic. And in many ways, here to hometown, that's her legacy. Of the people that are hearing my voice right now and who might see this later, I will guess that many of you, at some point in your lives, were touched by her kindness and her humor. There is no question that Illinois, and certainly Riverside, is a better place because of Judy Bart Tepinka's life and service. Personally, and I know I speak for everyone in this room, we will all feel the void of her passing, but we also are going to remember that smile, we're going to remember that hair, we're going to remember the fire, the fire that burned in her so brightly and that brought such happiness and hope to so many people. I did have an opportunity after the memorial to speak to Joe Tepinka, her son. On behalf of the village, I expressed our condolences to him and his wife Christina and their daughter Alexandra. And to Judy's countless friends, our prayers go out to you. Rest in peace, Judy. We are going to miss you. That's all I have. Ms. Rannan?
I will be brief. I just wanted to provide an update to the public that the Village of Riverside was evaluated with our credit rating based on the debt issuance that occurred, actually today, and that'll be later in the agenda. But Standard and Poor's reaffirmed our AAA rating. That's all I have.
That's good news.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that any trustee would need to move forward discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second for approval. Motion by Mr. Foley, second by Ms. Sussman. Let's call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Paul?
Aye.
Trustee Bellary?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Cole?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to reports of departments, commissions, and liaisons. We have no reports from departments or commissions. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we will move on to ordinances and resolution. First up is an ordinance amending Title VIII, Section 862, water service charges of the Village of Riverside, Illinois Village Code. Does anybody present this? Mr. Salinas?
Okay, so the first item up for consideration is an ordinance amending Title VIII, Section 8-6-2, water service charges of the Village of Riverside, Illinois Village Code. And this is in response to a formal notice that we received earlier this month from the Village of McCook that supplies the water commodity to the village that is then subsequently sold to the residents or to the residents of the village. And we received notice from the Village of McCook that they would be increasing the rate charged to the village by 12 and 1/2 percent. And that is in response to rate increases pushed onto the Village of McCook from the city of Chicago. Now, this goes back to 2011 when we first received notice from McCook that they would be increasing their rates to the village over the next several years. So this portion, this increase will only affect a commodity portion of the rate that is billed for water consumption. So the actual, so the water rate will, the combined water and sewer rate will increase from $10.18 to $10, excuse me, $10.18 cents per unit to $10.59 per unit, or a rate, or an increase of .41 cents. You know, who knows if there will be additional increases next year, but I think from 2011, they said that they were going to increase through 2015. Any questions on this?
So what does that mean for our residents?
So the residents, okay, so I've got, the average annual increase per household will range from $36.35 to $48.47, and this is based on the average consumption of 15 to 20 units per billing cycle. And this is based on the average consumption of fifteen to twenty units per billing cycle. And every billing cycle, uh, billing cycle equals every two, is it, every two months. So, that's an annual increase.
Annual, okay.
That's the annual increase, because the increase-
That's better than what I-
Yeah, yeah, no, the, the increase is only to the commodity portion, which is a small portion of the total overall rate that is-
So, three or four dollars every two months? Or, uh-
Six dollars.
Right, six dollars every two months, okay.
I think it's also noteworthy that the, that the amount that the village charges residents for maintenance of sewers and water has not changed, that we're actually able to-
Sewer has not increased, I believe, until, the last time we increased the sewer rate was back in 2004, I believe.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Yeah, over ten years.
Um, and water, we haven't, the, the rate for the village portion-
Right, for the village portion.
Has remained flat over the past three years.
Yeah. So, I think that that's notable, when construction costs, as we all know, have gone up markedly over the last several years.
Is there not anything that we can do? I, 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 and I, I say this because we constantly, every six months, are hearing about increases in our water, and we, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Village of Riverside, we pay the highest water rate in the entire county of Cook in this town. And I know that we buy our water from McCook, and then McCook does distribute water to other communities besides Riverside, since they have one of the central pumping stations. Is there nothing that we can do to get our voice heard in Chicago where it all begins?
You know, I think, I think there was an effort in 2011. I remember reading a, a lot of presidents of local communities getting together and actually formally sending notification to the city of Chicago after displeasure.
And, and many northern suburbs getting together and actually creating their own water systems to the lake, i.e. what Evanston is doing. Now, we're not that close to the lake, but, you know, I mean, it's, this is just going to keep going on and on and on and on.
I mean, when I-
And though the rate increases for the commodity, as Gene put, we haven't really raised our rates for the service. So, I mean, I feel like we're just paying the bump in the commodity, but the system and, and the service system itself is not getting funded.
The cost really comes into play if you're talking about purchasing or procuring water from other communities. It's really the infrastructure that leads up to those communities to get the water back to Riverside. Because there are other communities that are entertaining that, that as well, that are reaching out to communities along the North Shore.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, to address your, your broader question, I mean, we've tried, I mean, the, the prior board, uh, we did, we passed a very strong resolution of displeasure with how the city of Chicago is passing their water rates along. The West Central Municipal Conference has had repeated meetings with the city of Chicago about this point, um, but, uh, they have the water.
Yeah, too.
Unfortunately, that's what it comes down to. So, we've tried, but it's their one.
Right.
We have not had much luck.
So, I would ask for a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Title VIII, Section 862, of the Village of Riverside, Illinois Village Code. Motion by Ms. Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballard.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is an ordinance providing for the issuance of approximately $2,330,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2015, to pay for road and street improvements, for the payment of expenses incident thereto, and providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient for the payment of the principal of an interest on said bonds. This is in connection, of course, with the recently passed, uh, Street Bond Referendum. Mr. Salinas.
Okay, so that, the language of the ordinance has changed, and earlier today, uh, we left the final draft of the ordinance. The actual amount of the issuance has decreased. Uh, we originally estimated $2,330,000 in general obligation bonds. Uh, those bonds were actually sold this morning through a competitive bid process, um, and the actual bonds that were sold, or the par value of the bonds, decreased to $2,155,000. We do have a representative from Spear who conducted the competitive bidding. Uh, Kevin McKenna, president of Spear, is here with us, and he'll be able to provide more information in terms of the actual process, but I just do, do want to read a couple of items, uh, kind of like a housekeeping thing. So, I'm going to go ahead and read the, the revised ordinance. An ordinance providing the issuance of $2,155,000 general obligation bond, Series 2015, of the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, for the purpose of providing for the payment of costs of making road and street improvements within the village, for the payment of the expenses, expenses incident thereto, and providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient for the payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds. Couple more items I want to announce. The bonds were issued pursuant to a referendum held on November 4th, 2014. This ordinance provides for the levy of taxes sufficient to pay the bonds, and the, this ordinance provides many details for the bonds, including tax exempt, status, covenants, provision for terms and form of the bonds, and appropriations. Um, like I said, Kevin McKenna can, is the expert in this, so he's here with us, and he can provide more detail in terms of the actual auction of the bonds.
Mr. McKenna? Welcome, and thank you for coming to speak with us. I appreciate it.
Well, yes, we took bids today, and things went very well. As was stated, we started offering bids, uh, asking for bids on $2,330,000, but, you know, that was sized to fit within your constraint of not raising taxes about the existing bonds that are already out there, $260,000 a year. So, what happened was, the bonds, the best bid came in using four percent coupons. Now, for, you don't get to earn four percent, and as you can see from the letter that we passed out to best bidder, it is, um, an average rate of 1.966 percent. So, the, what's earned, the yield, is 1.966 average. The, uh, coupons are all four percents, so the difference there is that the, um, they're going to pay us a premium for those bonds. So, um, if you look at the, uh, the second page of the handout, and this is actually the photo of the, the bidding, and it was an internet bidding, so it's kind of like, um, bidding on eBay, nothing happens for ten or fifteen minutes, in the last two minutes, everything goes on. But you can see, people really wanted your bonds, because if you look at the second, I'm sorry, third from the right-hand column, where it says the number of bids, you can see the best bidder, which is BOSC, uh, uh, and that's the Bank of Oklahoma out of Milwaukee, and can't explain that, but they bid ten times. You know, I mean, this is, but they bid ten times, because it was going back and forth with Raymond James, who bid seventeen times. I mean, you know, this is a ten-year AAA piece of paper, wonderful piece of paper. And then the others, you know, two times, five times, two times, um, great piece of paper, and you can see where they started. They started, uh, because BOSC started, uh, what was that, about two hu, 2.8 percent, and they worked their way down to a 1.94. They really wanted your piece of paper. But, the, the third page shows all the, the coupons, and you can see what they're doing on the fours. Well, what they're, they're doing is, because everybody expects rates are going to go up, so if rates go up, you'd rather not have a two percent in your portfolio, you'd rather have a four percent in your portfolio, you're a little bit more protected as rates go up. If you do this for a living, and you buy bonds for a bank or an insurance company, you look better if you got a four in your portfolio than you've got a two, because even though you know you bought it to, at a price to yield to, you just, it just, as time goes on, you're going to look better to your boss having a larger, having a better coupon in there when you know that rates are three percent, that was. But, what the investors are actually making, the person, the entity who bought any of your 2015, the December 1, 2015 bonds, they have a four percent coupon, but they're only earning point four percent. So, they're paying a hundred and three cents on the dollar to buy that bond, and then they're only going to get, they're, they're going to yield, and that yield is point four percent. All the way out to, um, the 2024 bond, where the investor is paying almost a sixteen percent premium over face value, because they're going to earn 2.2 percent for ten years. They're going to get a four percent coupon, but because they're paying, um, a fifteen percent or sixteen percent premium upfront, the net result is, they're going to earn 2.2 percent. So, as I said, the sale went very well, uh, in the packets, the debt service schedule, and again, we were staying at that 260, 265,000 dollar scheduled, uh, annual taxes, where you already have your debt and, which is rolling off. And then finally, at the end, is the, uh, S&amp;P rating report, and as was announced, you know, you kept your AAA. I think it's good, though, just to look at the first page, and S&amp;P has changed their way of looking at things, they now have a scorecard, and so they tend to talk about, they, they rank a lot of different factors, and I think the middle of the first page is, is a good thing to review, and, and it's explained later on, but it says, "The AAA rating reflects the assessment of the following factors for the village: very strong economy, general economy in the area, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, uh, with very strong reserves, uh, very strong liquidity, providing, um, very strong cash levels to cover debt service and expenditures, strong management conditions with good financial practices, adequate debt and contingent liability profile, this is primarily related to, um, pensions, and strong institutional framework. They like non-home rule municipalities that are tax capped. They, they think that's a very good, from their viewpoint, that's a very good thing to do, to be." So, uh, again, five bids, you ended up under two percent for ten-year money, and I think this went very well, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. McKenna?
Good job.
Hearing none. Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate that.
So, I'd ask for a motion and a second to adopt the overturn. Motion by Mr. Foley.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballard.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd just like to make a comment that I think that these very complimentary remarks that we got on the budgetary status of Riverside and such is due in no small part to the financial acumen of our now interim village manager, Jessica Francis, who is our, um, financial manager, and, uh, I think that she has led us very ably in solidifying our financial position.
I completely agree with that. You really, you really enjoyed that, didn't you?
His report was-
She was right at home with you.
Thank you, Ballard.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is a resolution authorizing the village president to enter, into an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, and Riverside Township, Cook County, Illinois, relative to filming of township meetings. Did you want to present this, Mr. Ballard?
Well, I, you know, I, uh, this was originally on the content agenda, and I, I asked that we, we pull it off, uh, before the final draft was, was set out, only because I, I really think it's important that people understand, you know, you're, you're seeing both the township as well as D-96 on our cable, um, and, you know, these are being paid for by either District 96 or the township. So, the township is paying to have their meetings aired, and I think that's, that's a, that's a great show of open and transparent government, that they're willing to, to, to fund the operation in order to have their meetings out. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that, uh, the township, uh, did that. Uh, we've actually raised the rate a little bit, um, because we wanted to offer more opportunities for when the township has some special meetings or special events like the identity theft and things like that, that we would be able to cover those too, which are great services to our, to our residents. So, I just wanted to commend the township, uh, the township trustees, uh, for, uh, being open to the cable.
With that, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
So, moved.
Most by Mr. Ballard, and second by Ms. Collins. Further discussion, please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballard.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a resolution authorizing a $1,422,000 inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund to fund future capital expenditures. Mr. Salinas.
Okay, so now that the 2015 budget process has been completed, the operating budget, the capital improvement budget has been completed, as in prior practice, we need to ensure that funding is in place, uh, at the beginning of 2015, to fund all the projects that the board, uh, wants to carry out. This is something that, uh, we've done in the past. Last year, the amount of the transfer from the General Fund of unassigned fund balance to the Capital Projects Fund was $550,000. This year, because of the large projects anticipated in 2015, and a lot of them are grant-funded, um, the calculated inter-fund transfer is a lot higher. It's $1,422,000. I've provided a copy of the actual capital improvement schedule, and capulation of this, there's several calculations that need to be done. You have to look at your fund balance at the beginning of 2014, which is not a good number. You have to project what your changes in fund balance are going to be in 2014. Then, you say, "Okay, well, this is where we think the fund balance is going to be." Then you have to project the changes in fund balance in 2015, and compare that final number, and that's all in the table, to, and compare that to the unfunded projects scheduled for So, at the end of 2013, the General Fund had a total fund balance of $6,581,589. Of this, $3,440,325 was unassigned. Now, we're projecting in 2014, not including this transfer, that there will, the General Fund will have a fund surplus of $423,821. If the board approves this transfer, that surplus will actually become a deficit of approximately $998,179. Um, and then if you look at the agenda history, you'll see the little table that I prepared for the Capital Projects, and it kind of clearly shows how the number was arrived at. I'll entertain any questions that anybody has.
You said that, um, some of this is grant-funded, so will it be reimbursed for that?
There, there will be reimbursement. Timing, we don't know. I mean, we, if, if the, the work was done, for example, in 2015, we will record receivable and the related revenue. Cash may not come in until 2000, possibly 2016, but-
Right.
But it is, a lot of this is grant-funded.
Do you know approximately how much is grant-funded?
Well, for example, the Burlington streetscape, we have currently budgeted $1,176,000. The amount that is grant-funded is $754,660, so I'd say more than half. Then we have another big-ticket item. There's the resurface of East Burlington Street. That is currently budgeted at $510,000. The village's share is 20 percent, so, uh, the grant share is 80 percent of the 510.
Okay. So, a significant amount of this will be coming back in grant.
Correct.
Also, if you look at the projected increases of the fund balance, some of those revenues are contemplated as part of, for 2015.
That's part of the calculation, is we know that we're going to receive these grant funds, and that's part of the calculation. And then that shortfall really represents this inter-fund transfer. What is, what is the amount that is not, does not have a dedicated revenue source, whether it be from, you know, some type of revenue or just grants?
Questions? I'd ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
So, moved.
Motion by Ms. Sussman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballard.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Let me see, one thing, I, I think it's important for, to also recognize that this is an extraordinary, or next year's an extraordinary year for expenditures, that we are doing two things. We're actually catching up with some deferred purchases from the last couple of years, and we have these two huge projects. And even though, for instance, 80 percent of the repaving will be, will come from non, non-local sources, it's still a chunk of change for us, and that when we start looking at 200, at 2016 and 2017, we'll see a reduction in the amount of money that we'll be spending for capital. And I think that's important, because I certainly gulped when I looked at this and talked to Jessica about it today, and I think that's important to recognize that when we do the capital plan, um, or when you do the capital plan for next year, it'll look very different.
And this also includes the train station.
And it includes the train station, too, and that'll disappear, and that's a mu, one million, a chunk of change.
That's a million, right, yeah.
Yeah, so it, it will, it is a lot of money this year, but it will change markedly for the following years.
And, and if I can just add to that, I mean, I, I, that's, I think that's one of the things that, that I continue to be very proud of this board, is that, um, you know, we, we're not can-kickers. We, we tend to take these projects on and, and-
We tend to take these projects on and do the projects when they need to be done, and I think you're to be commended for that. Next up is a resolution of support authorizing applications to the Central Region Council of Mayor, Mayors for surface transportation program funding for the East Quincy Street and Long Common Road resurfacing projects. Ms. Francis.
As Sonia did her, the Streetscape presentation, this is somewhat reminiscent of that. Coupled with the Streetscape program is an STP funding element for Burlington. We're looking at submitting a grant application, similarly, for both Quincy and Long Common Road. There are calculations with regard to the agenda history sheet showing the total village share if, in fact, the grant is awarded. This is just requesting authorization to submit the grant request, and then if it is then awarded, to provide funding for it, saying that we will then obligate funding for it. For just East Quincy alone, the total village share would be $270,000 of a $475,000 project. And then for Long Common, the total construction would be $705,000, and the total village share would be $401,000, or closer to $402,000, rather. So it's an opportunity. Staff tries to find gaps, because obviously, streets are in need of resurfacing. When there is an opportunity to at least submit a grant application and potentially fill that gap, we'd like to seize it, especially because we're going to be so aggressive for the coming years with regard to resurfacing, so.
Can you explain why those two roads?
Because they are FAU routes. So they are federally aided urban routes. And so basically, they are eligible for federal aid. Also, with regard to, so that's one caveat with regard to it. Also, we have to make sure that they are up for resurfacing, and they are on our 10-year list. So we would just reprioritize some of the other streets to be funded by either the bonds or the non-home rule sales tax or MFT, and then this would be partially funded by grants and those other funding sources.
I just wanted people to be aware that we're not just picking roads for, that there was a reason for those two roads to be chosen.
No, they're, absolutely. And we have a list with regard to which, which, which streets in Riverside are FAU routes. And so it has to be basically within a certain period of time, whether or not they'd be eligible for this particular grant.
You know, I'd point out, too, that it's significant, I think, especially given some of the conversations that are going on right now, that Burke Engineering are the folks who really brought this to us as a potential. And they do have in mind that their, you know, their hope is, is that given what we're going to be doing on Burlington, might give an impetus for the granting of this resurfacing, since it's complementary to the project that we're, that we're trying, trying to go forward with right now. So we appreciate our village engineers bringing this, bringing this to us.
Related to that, is there any possibility we might be able to get Streetscape grants in the future to go along with?
There has been a discussion with regard to that. Obviously, if an opportunity is available, we will seek it out.
Yes. I have a question, please. The Burlington resurfacing is an 80/20 split, and this is a 60/40. Is that a general trend, that the government's funding a smaller percentage of these kinds of projects?
Burlington is 75/25, I believe.
It says 80/20.
80/20?
It's 80/20.
Oh, that's a 20/25, excuse me.
75/25.
75/25 for the street, yes.
But still, it's changing?
With, it, it also depends on the cycle and the cost share. With regard to the 60% of the actual construction cost, I'm not 100% sure as to why it's no longer 60/40. I believe it has to do with the timing of when it was last resurfaced.
Is it the same grant agency?
It is. It is. So, and I believe that if it has been done, and there's a certain timeframe, and I don't know exactly what the timeframe is, whether or not there's a little bit of a greater cost share, because more time has passed. And I can get you that information with regard to why it is lesser than the Burlington one.
I'm just curious if it was less money available in general, or, and also, on our table, it does say 80/20 village grant share under.
For Streetscape or for STP?
For East Burlington Street, FAU. The $510,000, it does say 80/20.
That's what it was.
One's 80/20, one's 75/25.
Yeah, that just, I was just, because 60 to 80% is a chunk.
Right. Yeah. But even, even with this, we're still looking at 40 cents on the dollar.
No, I understand that, it's.
Okay, other questions?
Lot of money.
Could I ask for a motion in a second to approve the resolution? Motion by Mr. Foley.
Second.
Second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Galloway.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, and I know y'all can wait for this one, is an ordinance submitting Section 414, various sections entitled for building regulations, Chapter 3 of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, relative to sign control and sign permit fees. So this is a continuing discussion of the sign ordinance. Ms. At.
Yee-haw. All righty. Sorry. All righty. So, from the last meeting, you directed us to draft a new ordinance incorporating specific changes that you wanted, and then asked staff to come up with language regarding allowing box signs and sidewall signs. So in the ordinance that you have before you, all of the changes that you directed staff to make specifically, and then also the language that you asked staff to come up with for sidewall signs and box signs are highlighted in yellow in that ordinance. So if you need to, as you've been looking through it, need to reference things, you know, the significant stuff is in yellow. We'll start with box signs. There was significant discussion about some of the existing box signs in town that we did not necessarily want to make non-conforming. So you asked that I come up with some language that would mimic and allow signs similar to what Aunt Diana's and what Arcade Jewelers has. So going through the ordinance, there was a few different places that changes needed to made, to be made. The first one would be under definitions, and I revised the box sign definition from what had been previously proposed to a sign that contains all the text and/or logo symbols within a single enclosed cabinet and may or may not be illuminated. The next place that had to be changed is going to be under the sign controls for the B-2 district, under prohibited signs. And so we had listed there before that box signs were prohibited. We put in the exception of except as permitted in subsection I-3, which we'll get to in a minute. Another place that had to have a change is under general design standards illumination. So we added in there a number four, internally illuminated box signs. The background material must be metal or another completely opaque material so that the light only shines through the lettering and graphics. So that kind of restricts the type of illumination that can happen for the box signs.
What section was that?
That is going to be under 4-3-13, so you're in the sign controls for the B-2 district now. You're going to go to letter H, number six.
Got it. Okay. Right. Okay.
So that number six is illumination, and that's where we added that illumination for internally illuminated box signs would be permitted, given these parameters, which is that the background must be opaque so that the light only shines through the lettering or the graphics. Next, we had to go to section I, number three, wall signs. And we added in there box signs for where the square footage, the different square footage allotments would be for. So box signs are added in there. So the maximum area for those box signs would be 18 square feet, similar to the nameplate signs, except for the larger, single-tenant buildings. We have that requirement in there that we added the last time. Box signs were also added to design standards. So now, under design standards, which is letter D under wall signs. Now, wall signs shall either be an individual letter sign, a nameplate sign, or a box sign, and shall comply with the following design and fabrication criteria. Criteria for the box sign would be under number two. Box signs would be mounted under a soffit and may not project past the front facade or elevation of the building. Illumination for the box signs is number five. So it says illumination shall be internal for box signs, and the light may only shine through the lettering and graphics. The background and sides shall be opaque. I also added a picture into the examples of permitted wall signs, and we have a picture there of Arcade Jewelers, so they can see the opaque background with just the letters being translucent. So those are the changes that are in the ordinance for box signs. Next up, we have.
Can I stop you there just a second?
Yes.
Just to ask the trustees how you would like to do this. Would you like to consider these proposed changes by subject, like, would you like to talk about box signs, and, or would you like to go ahead and go through all of the, all of the changes first? Go through all the changes, second?
Okay. All righty, sidewall signs. Couple of places that changes had to happen there. There was some talk about specific businesses in town that do have walls, or walls, do have signs on their sidewalls, so they're not necessarily facing a street, which is technically where, only where wall signs are allowed. So we were talking about, like, PNC Bank that has one on their sidewall that faces their parking lot. Also talking about Metalmites, they have a sign on the side of their building that faces their parking lot. The post office that has their sign that faces the parking lot, because their unit only faces, you know, the parking lot. So trying to deal with that situation, and you asked me to come up with some language that would allow sidewall signs. So there's a few different places that had to be changed. So we're looking under wall signs section again. Or not wall signs. Permitted signs for the B-2 district. Number two is amount of signage. It talks about primary signs and secondary signs. So the first thing I did was change where it says that they're allowed a following primary sign type for each public right-of-way upon which the property fronts. So taking that qualifier out of there will now allow the post office to have their wall sign on that sidewall, because they don't necessarily face a street frontage, but they would now still be allowed to have a wall sign. Same for secondary signs. Similarly, it also said you're allowed one of the following secondary sign types for each public right-of-way upon which the property fronts. Took out that qualifier for each public right-of-way upon which the property fronts. Then we get to letter C, which is blade signs. There was some discussion about whether we do a trade-off. You can get a blade sign, or you can get a sidewall sign. So I put in the qualifier that you can have a blade sign, except they will not be permitted for those businesses that choose to have a sidewall sign. Then we have letter E, where I added in sidewall signs as a permitted additional sign type. So it's not necessarily considered a primary sign. It's not considered a secondary sign. This is additional signage similar to the rear wall signs and the blade signs. So this reads sidewall signs. In addition, any business establishment with a sidewall facing an off-street parking area or public alley shall be permitted one additional wall sign on the wall facing the off-street parking area or public alley pursuant to the following. One being that such sign, such sign, no, such signs shall conform to the wall sign regulations of this section, and that such signs shall only be permitted if the business's other signs are in conformance with the regulations of this chapter. Then we get into wall signs section. We made changes under location to street frontage orientation, where it says all wall signs shall be oriented to face the street. We added off-street parking area or public alley in there, and be mounted on a building, building facade generally parallel to the street or off-street parking area or public alley. So those were the areas where changes were made to accommodate for sidewall signs in specific situations. So those are the new language that were not specifically discussed at the last meeting and asked to be added, and that's what staff has come up with based on your recommendations and feedback at the last meeting.
Okay, so.
Any questions about that?
Ms. Pollak?
I have no questions.
Well, okay, after you.
I would like to make a motion.
Can people speak before motion?
Yeah, why don't, let's get the motion on the floor, and then what you say will pertain to, yeah, what is your motion?
I would like to, I move that we approve the ordinance as submitted with two specific changes. One, that we add raceway signs to the, or signs with raceways to the list of permitted signs, if the race, with, with the design criteria that the raceway has to be an integral part of the sign design. I would use Fiori as an example of what the intention, intention is there. And second, to add facelit individual letter signs to the list of permitted signs if the building is a single tenant, has a single tenant on the first floor with at least 40 feet of street frontage. In other words, same criteria that allows the larger wall signs would also allow individual lit face, individual letter facelit signs, such as Riverside Foods has. That's my motion, just to explain, the changes are an attempt to address amortization and reduce the number of non-conforming signs that are created as a result of this, of the proposed ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Hamilton. Discussion, Mr. Campbell.
I'm Steve Campbell from Fairbank Road and the executive director of the Riverside Economic Development Corporation. I must say, this has provided quite a level of entertainment overall. First and foremost, I'll kind of start with the global view, that the ordinance on its face creates many non-conformities and creates a worse enforcement nightmare, or regulatory nightmare, whichever word you'd prefer, for staff. And two of the guiding principles of governance and laws is that you do not create more non-conformities, unless they are legal non-conforming, and you do not create laws that become enforcement nightmares. So that's at the face. Secondly, and as far as the Streetscape, which I didn't pay attention to, although it's been well-publicized for at least a year and a half, so I kind of wonder where all the people that come forward now were for the last 18 months. But as I saw the presentation by the community development director, I noticed that the Streetscape is well-represented, but that the real estate, the buildings that are along the Streetscape are, it's graphically incorrect. It's a solid, identical brick wall for the areas where there are a variety of architectures and facades. So I think that that kind of lends an air of SimCity to it, because this, and I like the Streetscape, and I'm not commenting on that, but the way that the, the buildings are represented carries a very mis-message for everyone. And on another front, I've heard many people talk about carrot sticks, although, Trustee Sussman, you said you didn't really think the carrot works, so I would think that that would advocate a bigger stick. And Trustee Pollak, if I, not looking to engage in debate, but if I might ask him, have you ever held a private sector job, owned your own business in a brick-and-mortar facility?
Just go ahead.
Well, I think that that bears, because many of the statements that have been made by Trustee Pollak would seem to suggest a familiarity with the plight of the small businessman at a brick-and-mortar location, because he has made many statements about what he thinks is going to improve their business. And I find those, from a reality standpoint, to be extremely flawed. So I just think that that does kind of bear on it. And the sign ordinance, from a psychology standpoint, would represent probably the first point of contact that a potential new business would have with the village. You have, or are proposing to create one of the most complicated enforcement nightmares of the sign ordinance I have ever seen. And for one, you could simplify it dramatically and just say, we will only allow metal blade signs and metal wall signs, period. And then you put in whatever your. And then you put in whatever your maximum size are because the silhouette backlit signs that many people seem to be so enamored of, particularly trustee Pollock, are not allowed under the current ordinance that you are proposing. It's interesting that even in the ordinance you're going to vote on tonight potentially, that there are examples of signs that are illegal as representative examples of good How can this happen? And the truth is, is the material of choice today to make every sign, unless it's a piece of metal that somebody paints or puts vinyl on, is plastic. And plastic fails your non-combustible requirement at every level, unless you're going to look for the fire department to give you an out. And it seems that everybody misses the point. People don't come to a shopping district to appreciate the ambiance of it. They come to buy things. And in order for them to buy things, there have to be retail locations that provide goods or services that the people want at a price they're willing to pay. Riverside has a CBD that lacks any sort of critical mass. It's not our fault. That was the land concept, the development concept of the day. And when I hear Olmstead raised to discuss the central business district, I would refer you to a document that is in the village's possession that shows every planted lot in the community. And all one needs do is go to the plate that shows the CBD and look at the aerial view and, and tell me how you would reconcile the Olmsteadian plan with what exists on Burlington and Quincy, with what exists in every other area of the village. And I love the village, although I've just recently become a permanent resident because I'm near in 40 years. And we always refer to the house as the person that owned it before, the person who lives in it now. But it's a special community. And the other thing I've heard is about how our stuff is outdated, that it, it just, it's not modern and looking good, which with the streetscape, they found that brush concrete was a little too modern. It doesn't work in the CBD. How does it work in the residential districts? There seems to be a lack of global overview with this and we get so tied up in details that we don't understand the process. And the process that the village is, is following with signs is to create an environment where the small businessman is going to leave. And the village really is charged with taking care of a much bigger problem and the number one issue in the CBD. Does anybody know what it is? It's a commercial landlord that believes that maintenance and repair is something that belongs in an alternate, parallel universe. He's a bad landlord. He chases people out. He takes advantage of them and the property maintenance codes aren't enforced. He's the number one problem in the community of the CBD and it needs to be dealt with. And the village has everything it needs to deal with it, except a better attitude and the willingness to take the first step. And to think that anything you do with signs is going to change the demand for the products and services of the people that have businesses here is, you know, I, I'm thinking that we're back in the 60s because it's wrong. And it doesn't matter how pretty a picture you want to paint. It's you making decisions with other people's checkbooks. And if you don't make a living in small business, you close or move. And it's hard. It's hard to compete with 100,000 square foot superstore, a big box that buys it in train car loads, when you have to buy it from a distributor two at a time. So people have to be willing to pay more or else it has to be a business that's destination. You can't get it anywhere else. Look at Higgins Glass. That's the type of thing we need. But those people, they're very sensitive to being leaned upon. They're entrepreneurs. Small business people and entrepreneurs are that way because we don't like working for the man. Would that be a fair statement, trustee Ballering? Trustee Foley? And you could work for a big construction firm, it'd be a lot easier. There'd be a 401K and you could go home at 5 o'clock and spend time with your family. Yeah, that's one of those alternate universes. And we're, and the small businessman is going extinct and nobody cares. And the rush to pretty in the CBD is only going to serve to bring about your worst fears because people's signs are an identity for their business and their business is an extension of themselves, just like the commercial landlord in Riverside. His buildings are an extension of what I perceive and in my opinion are his levels of integrity, honesty, and, you know, all the things that we learn in Boy Scouts. And that's another big thing that challenges them. When you have a business and the water's leaking and you, because the roof is bad and the landlord says, "I'll read your lease. It's your problem." Goodbye, small businessman. And they've moved and we've lost them. And so many of the signs that you talk about that are in town, that trustee Pollock seems to feel are so detrimental to the community, have been here a long, long time. So where do we get off rolling in today and going, "You've been doing it 20, 30, 40 years, but we don't like it." And as this goes through, I'm going to force the village into exact compliance with the code. And so much of what is talking about being passed is the same as the amortization schedule. And the guys that passed it didn't have the huevos to enforce it. And the last administration that was as arrogant and royal as any I have ever seen didn't enforce it because it plays a lot better in the boardroom than it does on the street. If the village ever moves to do that, I will, I will do whatever I can up to and including assisting with financial contributions to help those people fight what I think is an illegal taking of property by the government. I have some small experience in that. I have some small experience in being bullied by municipal authorities that just think it's okay because they want it. And we all make mistakes. All my pencils come with number two erasers. But there seems to be a lack of global understanding on how the pieces fit together. So you will drive small business away. You will get a reputation as a community and we don't need that. We have enough trouble. We have a commercial, a central business district you could put in a thimble. We don't have as much total floor space in the whole CBD as there is in one Walmart. And if you look at this document, you'll see that Olmstead provided for the maximum density of use in really the plainest and most efficient way, little boxes, because the CBD was supposed to provide, excuse me, the goods and services for the Burlington Northern executives and all the people that could afford the big lots in the Olmstead looking part of town. That was the original concept. And since the buildings were born 125, 130 years ago, they were developed at the time according to the local real estate rule de jour, whatever was in favor. And real estate is like the car. My '69 Mercedes has the pollution output of cars that were legal in '69. If they came along and said I had to update it to today's standards, the car'd go to the crusher. We can't do that to people. So please reconsider this. Also, your illumination, I'll be happy to read you the paper, but you're using an outdated standard that doesn't, that measures direct light. Doesn't reflect illuminance or reflected light or anything that we're looking for. And if the village is going to do that, the first thing you're going to have to do is at least bring all of the lights in the CBD up to the identical temperature and output. Because now there are all kinds of different outputs would speak of a lack of adequate maintenance. And then, so that we as the private sector do not get unduly charged with ambient light, does the village have a program, first measuring the light correctly with something that's not an archaic and antique English term? Because now they use lumens or lux or illuminance? And are we going to take measurements every foot along every facade to see what the ambient light put out by the street lamps is so we don't get charged with it? And I just want to know, because if you're going to tell me that I can only have so much light and since I'm not even there yet, there's a certain amount, I, I don't think I should get penalized for the amount of village illumination. Is, would that be a, at least a fair principle? So the village has a lot of work to do. You're going to have a lot of responsibility in terms of creating a, a lighting environment that's consistent in terms of providing measurement along the way so that we have a hard standard? And what if the illumination of the street lamp exceeds the 50 candle power? You know, it, it's going to completely outshine the lights, which again, candle power is a measurement of directly shining it at the light. It is not a measurement of reflected light off of a blade sign, which will have to be metal because everything else is combustible. If you pass it when you have to stand behind it 100%, you're not going to be able to do it. And that's where we get into interpretations and that's where we get into amortization schedules that people cite down the road, that all the people that even passed them didn't have the nerve to put it in right then. So I think you should just think about that. You should think about Riverside and I don't want to be like all the other towns around. If I did, I'd live there and so would most of the other people. And I'll bet if you had a referendum, "Would you like the world coming to a new and cookie-cutter Riverside?" That might be a very interesting referendum question, unless of course, we don't like the answer, so we don't ask the question. As when the plan commission doesn't address something and that equals they're firmly against it. Very weak principles in this, particularly when it amounts to those who govern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. So we have before us, did you want those, did you want those motions combined? Did you want to vote on both the raceway and the facelit combined? So we have before us a motion to amend the current ordinance in front of us to allow raceways and facelits with appropriate design considerations. Just a question for the attorneys. In a social situation like this where we don't actually have specific language to kind of flesh out the, how do we do that? I mean, how do you-
Yeah, well, it's, it's specific enough where it's probably worth taking a vote on it if no good figure wants to vote. And then we would just put the final on your consent agenda because, you know, for everybody to review and if somebody had questions about it, you know, they could take it off again. But I think we're close with what Doug said that-
I just want to be sure, I have, I have this motion to approve the ordinance. Yes, with two changes, adding raceways to permitted signs with design criteria and a facelit individual letter signs. The building has a single tenant on the first floor and 40 feet of frontage.
It was to match-
Right, right. With one exception on the raceway signs, the design criteria to be that the raceway be integral to the design of the sign.
Discussion.
Can I add another two then?
I mean, you can suggest a friendly amendment if he wants to.
My friendly amendment would be removing the amorti- amorti- amortization in the grandfathering of the existing site. I, I would not agree to that.
With, since we've-
I just wanted to make sure-
Let me say, since we've specified now, I think we do have enough detail where we could-
We can just make the amendments.
Just on the final vote.
Okay. So further discussions on Mr. Pollock's proposed amendments, amendment. Harry, Doug, call the roll on the amendment, please.
Okay, so I want to make sure we're, we're voting on what we have in our package in addition to the changes that kept your package.
Correct.
Correct. With the slight addition that trustee Pollock made regarding that the raceway is also a given, yeah, in the building's design.
Into the sign design, was it not?
Sign design.
And into the role, the role of the policy.
Sign.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Pollock?
Aye.
Trustee Ballering?
No.
Trustee Collins?
No.
Trustee Foley?
No.
Ah, no. I, I am correct. If I abstain, it counts as a no anyway, right?
Right.
But it's too late.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that.
If I abstain, if I abstain, it counts as a no. And then let me, and let me, and if I may, I would just like, since I'm the tiebreaker, let me articulate why. I think that, that something of this significance for the village, that is going to change the, the texture of our downtown for years to come, should not be something decided by, decided by a tiebreaker vote. I'm very concerned that, that if we cannot, if we cannot reach some kind of consensus, a broader consensus on the ordinance that is before us, I think many of the statements that we heard from Mr. Campbell are well-taken. And if we, if we are not there yet on this ordinance, then we have more work to do. But I don't think that something of this significance should be decided on a tiebreaker vote.
President Sales?
Yes.
I'd, I'd like to make another motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance with the following changes. One would be to delete the new definition of box signs that was changed between last meeting and this meeting. Second would be to change the additions regarding sidewalk, sidewall signs, except for tenants without street frontage, such as the post office. So in other words, it's narrow that permitted signs, so it's only for tenants without street frontage, such as the post office. Two, and three, to delete the fee waiver for variations. And four, to delete the amortization so that all existing signs would be grandfathered. And I, just to explain, the reasoning behind that is that if we're telling people that all the non-conforming signs can remain forever indefinitely, I don't see a pressing need to make all these exceptions that we've made for, to accommodate existing signs when we're accommodating the existing signs by grandfathering those, those signs. So in other words, these changes, as I've read them, would only apply if someone were changing their sign, putting up a new sign or changing an existing sign. If they have an existing sign, it would be allowed to remain indefinitely. It'd be grandfathered.
What happens if a bandana sign falls down?
If, when does it, under our code, when does a sign lose its legal non-conforming status?
There's a few different criteria for that.
If it's destroyed, if it is, in order to repair it, it would take more than 50% of its present value.
So the answer to the question, if I interpret that right, is if it were completely destroyed by more than 50%?
Right. Well, in, in the, in the hypothetical situation, if the sign just fell off because the fasteners gave way, they weren't maintained and it rusted. If you could put it back up repaired for arguably less than 50% of its value, you could keep it.
Yeah.
If it was, you know, if it, if it burned, if it, you know, exploded, if it was gone, you couldn't.
And the specific standard is 50% of the original cost of the sign.
So in that case, they'd have to either replace it with a conforming sign or seek a variation.
A variation, correct.
Trustee Pollak, could you just recap your four proposals?
Sure.
Again, I just wanted to make sure I got.
Number one, to delete the new definition of box signs. So go back to the one before last meeting, which basically prohibits box signs. And number two, to modify the permitted sidewall signs, to limit sidewall, sidewall signs to only tenants without street frontage, such as the post office. In which case, those businesses would get the same signs as if they had street frontage. Number three, to delete the fee waiver for variations for nonconforming signs, since there's no amortization, there's no reason to have a fee waiver because none of them have to come in for variation. And number four is to delete the amortization in its entirety and to acknowledge that all legally established signs are grandfathered.
Quick clarification, just because box signs, we added design standards and stuff for them too over in Wal. Do we want to get rid of all that too or just the definition for box signs?
The, 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 the design standards too because they have to.
So all box sign regulation in its entirety as was added by staff?
Right, goes back to where we were.
They're not allowed. They have to just say box signs prohibited and not list box signs as a permitted primary sign type.
So because this implicates the, the changes that the board asked staff to, to make last time, I think we should do these, Syria, and we'll do these one at a time.
Well, let's not ignore the fact that there, that the last point that Doug made was to, to not vote on amortization, to have amortization ignored at all, taken out at all. And that's really been the most contentious part. So I do want to point out that that's a major change in what we've been talking about. And that with the exception of the president, it was a split vote and.
So you're suggesting we should vote on that one?
No, I'm just saying, I don't, I want to acknowledge that that's a huge change with, before we jump to the, to the other changes we're talking about, I think nobody's actually acknowledged the fact that that's, that's a major way of starting to talk about a compromise on something that, that staff and our legal help and the trustees and the commission has been working on for nine months. And I just want to, if I hear Trustee Pollak correctly, that would grandfather in effect in all the signs currently in the village. And then say for new signs, which would in effect eliminate the need for a variation for current signs.
Right.
Unless, I guess to Joe's point, unless somebody wants to replace something that's been destroyed by more than 50% of its value. And then, then it would say that for, if I understand you correctly Doug, again, that for new signs or new businesses coming in, then there is a set of rules which is available in advance and is well known to businesses coming into town and would fit one of my needs, which is as we finish the streetscape, not to have any businesses surprised by what's going, potentially new businesses coming in with us thinking we're going to be changing regulations. Again, we would have something in place so that people exploring, coming into town either through the chamber or through staff would understand what the rules are.
I mean, is your amendment, would you prefer to have them voted on separately or?
I really would, assuming there's a second, which I don't know if there will be, I would rather have it voted on all at once.
Is there a second?
I'd like a friendly amendment to that.
Friendly?
Friendly. It is friendly, I promise.
Well, we don't have, we don't have a motion.
You gotta have a second first.
Steve, here in the process, is he talking about striking the amortization section out of the existing ordinance or just not putting in the, whatever the adjusted one was?
Striking.
Striking entirely.
Completely.
That's what I said grandfather. I clearly said, you said, clearly said grandfather.
I understand the grandfather, but.
Striking.
You have so many changes that.
It strikes the amortization schedule.
They're a life speed. I'm not so sure that.
Steve, if you, if you have comments, you really should come up here.
But she's going to hold it.
No, she doesn't.
Well, first, let's, uh.
Do I, do I do this now?
Well, first, let's see if we have a second for his, his amendment. Then if you have a friendly amendment, you can offer it. So do we have a second for his motion?
I'm a second his motion.
Okay, now you have something.
That the grandfathering of current signs is for current permanent signs, not current temporary signs.
Yeah, I'm not sure what temporary signs, did you have something specific?
There are some temporary signs that are on the listing here and I don't want those to be grandfathered.
That, I will accept that.
It has to be a real sign.
Right. Do you have a second?
I'm going to continue to vote no, all the way across the board. I know I've said it before and I've actually been ridiculed about it by some people, both on the board and in the community. But I really think it's important that we do wait till we do the streetscape. This side ordinance thing to me is the least important thing in this village right now for us to address. And I know, and I'll say it again for the 10th time, I appreciate all the hard work that the planning and zoning committee, the village staff has done over the last nine to 10 months on this. It's been a lot of work. I don't think we're ready for it. And I don't think we'll ever be ready for it. And a lot of the things that Mr. Campbell spoke to, I believe in, a lot of the things that we saw on Mr. Buttermer's slide presentation earlier in the evening, spoke to sightlines and vision. And with that as a sign, if you come to Riverside and you don't know where Higgins Glass is or you don't know where the Choo Choo restaurant is, and these are hidden by trees and landscape, you cannot see the signs, and the signs are a mere point. And I really think that if we are about to embark on $1.1 million project to revamp the streetscape, I'd like to kind of let that settle in before I take a look at how I'm going to address the signs and how they look to the village. Because again, as a resident for 52 years, there is not a single sign in this town that bothers me. These signs are, and I believe in what Mr. Campbell said, an identity, an extension of the business owner. It's who they are. Some of these business owners in town acquired these signs when they bought the business. It came with the business. And they didn't want to change it because they didn't want people to think it was a different store or something. If we live in a town that has literally less than 50,000 square feet of retail space, who are we trying to compete with? And what are we trying to do here? These are businesses that have been in town, some before I was even born. These are people that I patronize, that you patronize, that everyone in this room patronizes. And, and some of them are hanging on by a thumbnail. I don't want to and nor am I open to talking about any sign ordinance. That's how I feel.
But you know that we're, that all those that you're talking about are grandfathered in. We're not asking them to do anything.
I, I just don't want to deal with this, with the sign ordinance.
Just a parliamentary question. Do motions to table take precedence over pending motions for amendments?
Yes.
So that's your prerogative, Mr. Pollak? If you want to move to table, that would take precedence over the vote on the amendment?
I, I, no, I, I, I want, I want more of you guys to see what, where I'm coming from. You know, I.
Okay, so we'll go back then to the discussion on Mr. Pollak's amendment as modified by Ms. Collins. Further discussion?
Mike, I see where you're coming from and I think one of the main sticking points to me along the whole road here was affecting our current businesses because I don't think it's fair that if we took funds for signs and, and we have allowed them to, to go up and many of them have come to this, come in front of the plan commission and, and have gotten their, and all of them actually have come for the plan commission, got their permit and, and legally put those signs up, I don't think it's fair for us to take them down. 100%. So grandfathering makes me very, very happy. But what I, what, what, what kind of pushes me a little bit is if we all agree that certain signs are acceptable, for example, Aunt Diana's and, and, if we all agree that those are acceptable, why not allow them into the ordinance? You know, why, why not allow the, the amendments as written in here go forward? Because we all, we all kind of sat here and said, yeah, we, we, we like those signs. They're not bad signs. You know, that we, we don't mind illumination. It actually looks, you know, it, it brightens up the corner. Why, 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 why can't we have, I would love to have this ordinance, less the amortization. That's, that's to me is a win-win. Because we, we allow the flexibility to the business owners, new business owners coming in. I mean, if you, let's just, let's just think about raceways for, for a second. You know, if they're done right, like, like you specified.
That's not on the table right now.
But.
Just to say no, the ordinance that he did.
Stay with me here. Stay with me.
Well, but it would have, on his first, the first suggestion.
On the first one, but.
Yeah.
This is appropriate.
Okay.
I agree.
I'm rambling on.
Sorry.
If, 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 if a, if a business comes into the village center and let's just say it's, you know, Tony's Pizzeria, love to have a pizzeria in town. By the way, the ordinance is written, whether you have silhouette or illuminated, I, I can even give up that. But it would, it would have to be individual letters. And Tony's Pizzeria, you would have to drill in, and that's small, I mean, just Joe's Pizzeria or Joe's Pea. You'd have to drill in 20 holes in the side of that building, which is, I don't think the owner of a, of a building like that would allow it to happen. And that could, that could affect the, a business coming into town. Where if, 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 if we all agree that a raceway sign isn't bad if it's done properly and we have design elements written into the code or implied, and I love the idea that you have these pictures down here so it shows people exactly what we mean, then why not have it? Why, why not, why not allow that latitude to those businesses? That's, that's.
I'd like to respond to that because it's a very good question. It's one I've given a lot of thought of, a lot of thought to. And my conclusion was that if we're allowing all existing signs to remain, we, we, I'm trying to articulate this, but, but it, it focuses on unintended consequences. Anytime you write a code and you start to get into detailed design language, somebody's going to come in here with a sign we don't like. There, there's a possibility that someone's going to figure out how to meet our, the, the strict letter of the law with a raceway or with a, or, or otherwise. And it's, it's, it's not going to be a sign that people like. So on the other hand, if someone comes in here like Fiori with a sign with a raceway that people like, I have faith in this village to do the right thing and approve a variation. I think, you know, we, we've all agreed on, on the signs we like. It's not like, you know, we, it's going to be contentious if someone else comes in with a sign like Fiori or if someone else comes in with a sign like, like Aunt Diana's. It's, it's, it's very unlikely that anyone's going to say no to a variation for that. And so I would rather accommodate those signs that are outside what we know will result or what we're 99% confident will result in good signs. I'd rather keep the as-of-right part of this code more narrow if we're grandfathering everything. So that people who are outside of that as-of-right, we have a chance to look at it and say, yes, that does look as good as Fiori. Or no, that looks like a cheap raceway sign. And, and, and we have then the authority through the variation process to say yes or no. Now, if we were amortizing, I feel like in that case, we have to be more flexible. But we're not amortizing, so I think we need to be a little bit more narrow, a little bit more sure about people who don't have to go through a review process, they're putting up a, a good quality sign that, that every, that the community will like.
Mr. Pollak?
Maybe Mr. Campbell can answer this question for me. And I take it, sir, are you a landlord of, of any small businesses? I, I know you.
Maybe like.
Dabble in real estate.
28 of them.
Okay.
Currently.
Okay, before we, because we have not typically allowed back and forth from that way going this way. So I don't think it's proper for you to be asking questions of him.
I think that he was probably going with, as a landlord, would I allow somebody to drill a dozen holes in the front of a building?
Yes.
And the answer is no, because I have the same types of buildings that are located in our CBD. They are historical construction methods of individual bricks and mortar. And when you start putting half inch holes in them, when the one tenant goes out of business, which is a 95% probability, and moves on to going back to work for somebody, then the landlord is stuck with all those holes. And so what, and, and you can look at kind of a similar situation over in the outbuilding complex of the Walgreens Tiff in Lyons, where I think now it's Dottie's and whoever was there has gone out and there's maybe eight or 10 holes that are from the old sign. And it causes a real deterioration, not only in the structure, but also in the visual ambiance and impact. And again, with the ordinance you're passing, by denying anything that's combustible, you are limiting signs to a piece of flat metal attached to the wall or as a blade sign. This is assuming that we have non-combustible paint on them and depending on how far you want to take it. That's some of the enforcement nightmare. And to establish illumination levels without a clear, I mean, a statement that the village is going to find ambient light levels so that we don't get charged with them, how can you put an ordinance like that in that's unenforceable? That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Pollak?
And I won't break any rules. I've already broke a lot of rules tonight. No, I'm.
That's why we love you.
Trying to cross talk. And this is probably why I won't be a trustee in nine more months. But these signs, they're hanging on what? They're hanging on a building. Mr. Campbell brought up, and I keep referring back to him because he's brought up some very, very good points. The, the major landlord in this town, who owns over 50% of the buildings in the downtown, I would be more interested in going after him because I think these signs would look better if his buildings looked better, if they got paint, if the gutters were fixed, if the soffits were fixed on some of them, if the mortar was tuck pointed on all his buildings. These signs would look better, his buildings would look better. You know, it.
The CBD would look better.
Okay, now I think we are kind of going field here now in regard to Mr. Pollak's amendment.
But you want to know why I'm against this ordinance? And if I'm a trustee and I'm allowed to speak, I think it's because, I, I think there's much more to the way that the town looks than just in the way a sign is illuminated or how bright it is at night or what the hours of operations are. You want to put blade signs up, but we're going to plant trees and you won't see them. So I really think that we're just kind of shotguning this ordinance out there. I think we need to either slow it down or table it or whatever you all want to do. But there's much more to, if this is a sign of the building and the rest of the building looks crummy, why am I talking about this? Why am I not talking about the building?
Mike, why are they mutually exclusive? Why shouldn't we be going after bad landlords at the same?
We should be going after.
So why are they, why are they mutually, why do you only have to have one or the other?
Because the poor shop owner that owns that sign that's hanging on a landlord's building that doesn't care, you're going to blame him for his sign when the rest of the building is horrible and that's not his fault. He's paying his rent.
Actually, enforcement is much more difficult when it comes to property maintenance issues, which is why it's a lot easier to lean on a businessman who can't really get up and defend himself and is one guy alone fighting. He's trying to keep the alligators free and in the swamp as opposed to the landlord who is noncompliant with life safety and property maintenance codes. And I'm a landlord. I have a lot of buildings. I have a lot of tenants and most of them are small business. In fact, all the commercial tenants are small business. So yes, I bring together a unique blend of experience that most people wouldn't have. I've been a small businessman and now I'm the landlord of the small businessman. And life safety issues, I don't compromise on because money's not worth somebody getting hurt or dying. But for you as the municipal authority, it is much more difficult to tackle that problem than it. problem than it is to lean on businesses for signs. And what I, I would think that the two thousand five ordinance should serve as a wonderful illustration of a politically expedient ordinance that was passed and not even enforced by the people who passed it. To me, that's extremely troubling, because it leaves what happens, and this is not unique to Riverside. But somebody down the road reads it, and now they're going to treat it like it's the Bible, and it's strict enforcement. And you end up with ordinances that really cannot be enforced unless the village does a whole lot of work to determine what ambient light levels are, and you understand that non-combustible limits you to only a piece of steel. And the, the material of choice to make signs today, no matter whether you like them or not, or they're pretty or ugly, is plastic. A vacuum-formed plastic. So is the fire department remiss? Are they going to craft an exemption? I'm not saying that everything is wrong, but can you at least answer those important questions that really bear on almost everything that you're talking about? That's all. And I, all I'm trying to get you to do is to consider it globally, because it's not just in the details. It's how the details fit together. And what you're doing is going to end up making the central business district empty, because the people won't locate there out of fear, or they go out of business. And it's not what you want, it's not what you're doing on purpose, but it is, as trustee Pollock said, one of the few gems that I found worthwhile, was unintended consequences. And you need to consider those, because they're other people's lives and other people's money. And it's very important, far more important than whether you like them or you don't like them, really. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. So, so here's where we are. We have, we have a pending motion, an amendment by Mr. Pollock. Mr. Foley, it's not, it's, you know, it, it, it's not our prerogative to do something that you want. If you want to make a motion to table, you can do that. Mr. Pep Ballerine, if you want to make a motion to amend his amendment to include something else, you can do that. So if y'all want to make those motions, let's make them, vote on them. Otherwise, let's get back to Mr. Pollock's motion and debate and vote on that one. Ms. Collins.
Say it, Jim. Go ahead.
Ms. Collins.
You know, my concern all along has been the current business owners, that I don't want to cause them any hardship, and I don't think it's appropriate to ask them to change their signs. So removing the amortization, whether I agree with every element of this ordinance or not, I think that is, removing the amortization has taken away that issue, and so I can support this, because it has been worked on. If we, if it passes and we find that there are problems, nothing says that this is the ordinance for the rest of all time. If Sonia finds that there are issues that we need to address, I would hope that we could then address those as they come along. And so that's why, that's why I stand.
I would like to ask Mr. Marzo, from the legal standpoint, the, the issues about the way light is measured, and the issue about combustibility. Can you, can you address either of those?
I, I can't address combustibility, but it is true that the, the use of the terms, at least in my experience, of lumens is more common. Although I don't know about signs. I've dealt with it mostly when you're measuring standards for street lighting and so forth, they're almost always in lumens.
But, but there's, there's plenty of places that still use foot candles.
Right, yeah.
But a foot candle is not a general.
This is, this.
Okay.
All right, can, can we do what Pat suggested? And, and can, and perhaps look at the combustibility? I don't think that using non-combustibility is that, I, I think there are other ordinances that use non-combustibility. So they must, and I can't imagine that they all just use metals, so perhaps there's a little bit more work that can be done with or without the fire department on that. But I don't think non-combustibility is something that we came up with, you know, out of, just pulled it out of the heavens. So, so maybe we can do a little bit more work on that. But I think that's a fairly standard part of sign.
Right, right. And the importance of something like that is just to be consistent in your interpretation of it, once, what's, once it's enacted.
And so you said it is fairly consistent, right?
Yeah, the word combust- yeah, non-combustible.
Yeah, that's what I thought, when we were doing the initial work and reading other ordinances.
Okay, so we're back on Mr. Pollock's amendment, as there's further discussion on his amendment as stated. Hearing on, please. Did you have something, Mr. Callahan?
I did have a question.
Of course.
Chambers in favor of the grandfathering, so thank you for that. But the question is, what happens if a current business has a grandfathered sign and has to relocate within town? Is that same sign grandfathered in with a new location?
No.
No, there's a provision that says, no, no non-conforming sign shall be moved in whole or in part to any other location unless it's made to conform to all the regulations.
Good question.
So if somebody wanted to do that, they would need to seek a variation and explain, you know, why they should be allowed to do it. And there are arguments that why you would be.
So the amendment before us is to delete the definition of box signs as amended in the one before us tonight, to delete the sidewalk language, to delete the fee for variation, to delete the amortization schedule, and to grandfather with the exception of temporary signs, which would not be grandfathered. Did I get that right?
Just to be clear, the, to delete the new definition of box signs, including the design regulations.
Right, it would be to eliminate all, all the work to make them legal in certain respects.
And then to, to modify the sidewalk signs, to delete them except for tenants without street coverage, such as the post office.
Or Coventry Lane if it were to be subdivided.
Well, yeah, I, I just use that because that's.
Right, but, yeah.
So are we clear? Everybody's clear in what we're doing here? Okay, please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
No.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
No.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
No.
No. Anybody else have something else they'd like to try?
It, I don't know if we're done with this. We might be done in general with this for the evening, but I'd like us to think about.
Where we stand right now is, we still have the two thousand five, those two thousand five, um, ordinance.
Which is still in place.
Which is still in place.
Right.
Well, I would make a motion that we accept this ordinance as written and modified, with the inclusion of raceways and illumination, and remove the amortization and grandfather all existing signs. I mean, jesus, forgive me the opportunity.
I'll second that.
Have you taken?
All right, so raceway sign?
Yeah, it's, it's what was presented tonight, but taking out the, the amortization of non-conforming signs, thereby making all existing permanent signs grandfathered.
And also adding in raceways and placeways.
Right, so it's, it's trustee Pollock's original.
That's right, that's, that's correct.
Original amendment, kind of combined.
Right, yes, yes.
Is there a second? Did you second? I guess the problem I have with that is, I don't see that as much of a compromise. And I was hoping, frankly, from that we were going to be able to work out a compromise. And I don't look at it that way. And, and that's my concern. I, I thought we were going to be able to compromise. I think that, I mean, everybody heard me talk about the grandfathering and the amortization before, and yet I voted in favor of eliminating it. And I don't see much reciprocal reciprocity in sort of compromising on that. And that's a, I, I think that's a concern of mine on this. And I don't know then if it should be tabled. I don't know it, to give us time to think about it. I am very concerned that, that, I, I, this is a major change to put in place or not put in place where the president of the board is the deciding vote. Clearly, it's a, a split vote, and that, I mean, it concerns me in that there, that, you know, sort of compromises lacking, and it concerns me that we're so divided on it.
I, I just, I would add just to that. I mean, there are substantive issues with this that we have obviously seen tonight, that there's a stark difference of opinion about substantive matters. From my own, just my own personal standpoint, I, I continue to find the, the ordinance as written confusing. I think that, that it, that especially if, you know, since we're looking to the future, that, that a, a more, a more consistent, kind of more linear kind of presentation of, of the ordinance. I mean, it disturbs me that, that we have a box sign just defined in one area, and then I have to go to the back of the, the ordinance to find that we didn't really mean that definition, that we're going to allow some box signs. So I, I just think that there, from a drafting standpoint, that it could be clearer and simpler for prospective businesses. So if it's a, if there's a possibility, again, now, if we were to table it to allow those kinds of changes to be made, it may well be that the substantive issues that seem to divide this board would still be there, just better drafted. So it's, that's, you know, for what that's worth, that's a concern that I do have as a former drafter.
So basically, you're saying we have a camp.
We have a what? No, we don't even have a camp, frankly.
Mr. Pollock?
We have a hole in the grounds.
Can we get some language somewhere, anywhere, about enforcement? It seems that we had this ordinance in two thousand five, and I think we wrote many tickets. So what are we going to do now? Who's, who's going to place this thing that you're all talking about?
Well, that's, unfortunately, I think that's the predicament that, that you're placing, that we are placing our staff in. Because now we're going back to a two thousand five ordinance that, one of the reasons we're having trouble with this is that the two thousand five ordinance has not been enforced, or it was, it was enforced laxly. So moving forward, what are you, what are we asking our staff to do? Are we asking our staff to now start enforcing something that they haven't enforced for the last nine years?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. I mean, and, and.
Well, but.
Mike, there's an amortization.
If that's, if that's what you're asking, then you're, then you're, you're asking amortization, you're asking people to have, be forced to replace signs.
No, I'm, I'm asking to, I, I'm just saying, look, we had a code, we did enforce it. We're back at the table talking about another code that won't get enforced. So we either talk about moving forward enforcement as part of this ordinance. Spell out, what, what is the enforcement in, in this? Where's it talk about enforcement? And, and let me finish, let me finish. Because I'm going to go the long way home here. If we don't talk about enforcement, if we don't put the rules of the game on the field, then what are we talking about the game? I mean, you could talk about raceways and this and this and that, but we've had, we, we had no enforcement before, Doug. We had none.
May I? Why, we have a new village manager, we have a new community development director, we have a new building inspector. We're going to tell them, if this is approved, we want this enforced. What more do you want?
I, I want some verbiage in here.
It's in there.
It's in there. Four dash three dash eleven enforcement.
Yeah, they, they enforce it.
And, and more, more importantly, it's in the two thousand five. So if nothing happens here tonight, we're going back to two thousand five, and you're asking them to now enforce something that's.
And, and Mike, also, because we're grandfather, because we're grandfathering in all the signs currently in town, the enforcement is really about when they apply for a new sign or when a new business comes in. It's not going around and, right, in the next, even in the next year, really.
Well, if I may.
In the, in the one that we just voted down. Not in the, but in the one from two thousand and five, there is an amortization schedule, which is already, I mean, everybody should be fine by that, because that was already over with.
Yeah, if we, if, if you say, let's just go back to two thousand and five. The real difference between two thousand and five and my first motion is that in two thousand and five, we didn't allow blade signs, wall signs had to be smaller, we didn't allow rear wall signs, and that's about the difference. So by saying, let's just go back to two thousand and five, compared to my first motion, you're taking away signs, you're not adding anything. Because the motion I made to begin with, in essence, was the two thousand and five code enforced with more signs for the businesses, period. That was what the motion was. In essence.
We're, we're so close, and I agree with you on the compromise. But is there a way we can, we can establish, or we can work through the Doug's concern about having, and, you know, an ugly raceway sign?
Or a box sign?
Is there, yeah, is there some way we can work through those concerns and, and allow them to be added into the code so we can have them? But is, I don't know if the correct term is design review, or the correct term is, you know, who, how that's done, or what, how that's, but is there a way we can massage that, where we, we allow, you know, we allow them to have them, and, but we can't, we, they, they, I don't want to say this, but they can't be ugly. Because, you know, but, you know, to be honest with you, you can have ugly blade signs. I mean, you can have ugly anything, if you really tried hard. No question.
Can I follow up on your question, Doug? Can, I, I'm confused about this too. So could you help me understand why you think that the changes that we saw tonight for the box signs, boy, this is getting confusing to even talk about it, would allow, potentially allow us to have quote-unquote ugly box signs? Why, why is that not a safeguard, the language that we looked at tonight?
Original.
That's not the original language, the.
This, this is original.
The language is in our.
Tonight's original.
Correct. I would like to know why that's, because you asked that we remove it and go back to the original language from the plan commission. Your concern about the language that's in our packet tonight is what exactly?
It's, it's, I, I apologize upfront, I don't know if I'm going to give you a good answer, but I, I am concerned because it's such a unique language, I've never seen it before. And it just feels like to me that, that there could be holes in it that would allow someone to put up a box sign that is not, yeah, the Aunt Diana sign and the arcade sign uses really high, nice materials, it's solid, it's architecturally consistent with the building. I could see, you know, someone taking a, a sign that's basically like the box signs, you know, on, on the corner building, that still is, is, you know, aluminum frame, you know, that's not integrated into the rest of it, and it's just, the face is changed so that instead of the letters being opaque, the background's opaque, and the letters are transparent, but it's still got a different-looking box around it, and it's just hung below the window instead of, in other words, take those same box signs, hang them below, you know, recess in the doorway, change out the face so that the opaqueness and transparency is reversed, and you may have compliance. And it'd be less than attractive sign. Now, you know, it's not likely to happen, but it could. If, you know, if we were amortizing, I, I guess I'm willing to take that chance, but if we're grandfathering, I just, I'm not willing to take that chance. And I'd rather have the person who wants to do an Aunt Diana sign come in before the planning and zoning commission and the village board and show us that it's consistent with that sign, and, and, and then we would be able to confirm that and approve it.
But if we had, if we had, just like Sonia did here, where she has a picture of the arcade antique sign, if we had this sign, we have a new business come into town, and we hand them, you know, this is what we approved, this is the type of box sign that's approved, and they come in front of the plan commission or in front of Sonia, or in front of whoever is the community developer, and, and does exactly what you have, an ugly sign that's, hangs too low, because it would probably hang too low or whatever, wouldn't, wouldn't she just say, you know, no, that's not what, that's not what we have here? And, 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 oh, I'm not going to, I'm not going to give you a permit, and if you want to override me, I have a system for you to do it. It costs two hundred and fifty dollars. You go to the plan commission, the plan commission looks at it and they go, you know what? That's an ugly sign. Ain't going to happen. And if you override me, you can go to the village board, and we'd all sit here and say no.
But I think Mr. Molina would say that that's some shaky ground you're on. If they could show that they meet the technical definition and we deny their permit, because it doesn't look as nice. it doesn't look as nice as the picture in the book.
Then you're sort of regulating taste.
Right. Now, another alternative, which I threw out early on but was rejected, was to make those types of signs conditional signs. In other words, don't call it a variation, lower the standards for approval, and they still have to come before the plan commission and the village board, but it's not a traditional variation, it's a conditional sign. I proposed that before.
Can I suggest a possible compromise? I was just going to suggest a possible compromise. I mean, it seems, because I do think that you're very close. What about a slight modification of Mr. Pollak's amendment where you would accept the ordinance that's given to you tonight, you would delete the language concerning the sidewalls. So leave the language in about box signs, delete the fee for variation and delete amortization. Is there a consensus if they would like that?
Yeah, I, can I just, in part because of deference in time, I think there may be several people, I'm trying to figure out what we're looking for. Are we looking for 100% in favor? Because I, my sense is that we're not going to be there tonight. And I don't mean to speak for people, but, you know...
Majority would be nice.
Well, I'm quite serious. I mean, this is an important piece of legislation. This is an important ordinance.
Ellen, can I, you turned.
I did not turn. My concern is that...
Is yours is the grandfathering issue, am I correct?
No, that's not the only issue. My issue is that we have this 2005 ordinance, which as I read it, accomplishes just about what I want if we would just enforce it. I don't feel like a new ordinance is necessary, and if we're removing the grandfathering, I feel like what we've been doing is a waste of time. So, no.
That's what I'm asking. So I'm not quite certain that tonight's a good, I mean, I don't quite know what I'm asking, but we still have...
Well, one thing we could do is if you do decide to table it, to discuss it again, we could look at, we could give a little report on those issues, the lighting issues, the light measurement issues and combustibility.
I don't think that those are the issues.
I know, I'm just saying.
Those are cleaning it up in a way.
You know, you could clean it up if you wanted to.
I mean, I don't mean, I know we'll have to do that, but...
Well, so we've got a motion on the floor. Oh, we don't? I thought we did.
We did. I made a motion.
Yeah, Joe made a motion.
Oh, we have a better than that?
No, we had that.
And that was the one that would basically keep this and the raceway facelit and amortize?
Amortize it. Grandfathering.
Yeah, right. Take out amortization.
I'm sorry, Joe, add in raceway, add in...
It's this ordinance that was given to us tonight.
Plus trustee Pollak's additions.
Original to changes.
So it's trustee Pollak's first recommendation with the addition of taking amortization table out.
Correct.
Trustee Pollak's first recommendation was...
The ordinance has written plus raceway signs, plus facelit signs for larger buildings.
For single tenant or...
Single tenant, yeah.
Please call the roll.
I'm still confused. I'm really sorry. Could somebody please tell me what we're voting on?
They have an amendment that would accept the ordinance as in your packet. Adding raceway signs with design criteria, adding facelit design criteria, deleting the fee for variation, deleting amortization. Correct?
I thought the original, trustee Pollak's original proposal was to delete the new definition of box signs.
Right.
Go back to previous.
That's his second.
No, that's the second proposal. It's not the first proposal.
All right. So what's the first? You're not going back far enough.
So the first one?
Yeah, the facelit.
It's right at the beginning of the discussion. You started out with it.
I don't know. I'm not voting for this.
Raceway to list improvement signs as part of...
Is everybody clear on what we're voting on?
Yeah, but I'm going to defer to Ellen and come around to me. I've never done that before.
Okay, are we clear on what we're, on this amendment? Okay, call the roll, please.
Excuse me, I want to get back to where I was. Okay, trustee Sussman?
I'm going to not, I'm going to wait until everybody's voted and not vote first on this one. I've never said that before, but I think I have the prerogative to do that, right?
You do.
I've been voting first for a long time, Mr. Sussman. I am not.
You absolutely.
No. I mean, yes, I will vote first, and I vote, you know, no. Okay?
Trustee Pollak?
No. Yes.
Trustee Bellinger, yes?
No.
Trustee Collins, is it no? Trustee Foley?
No.
Trustee Sussman?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
I second.
Do we need to make that motion to a time definite?
Well, you don't have to. I mean, you could table, make a motion to table indefinitely, but, you know, in a small group like this, anybody can, you know, two trustees or the village president or staff can put it on the agenda next time, you know, not like Congress or something. So it's not that earth shattering a difference. But if you want to discuss it next time, the motion will be to table it to the next meeting. If you're not sure, it'll be motion to table indefinitely.
Motion to table indefinitely.
Second amendment's called.
Can I comment on that? I'll vote no on that simply because I don't see why we would do that. It's denied. It's done. And if trustees want to bring it back up again in January or February or March or April, talk to the village manager and put it on the agenda at any time. So I don't see the reason to table it.
I mean, actually, trustee Pollak, now that I think about it, the motion really isn't proper because you're not motioning, you're not moving to table anything.
Right.
There's no, you know, it would be if there was a motion and a second to approve something and you wanted to put it on.
Well, but we really, there was never a motion to just accept this as draft.
No, that's true. Well, that's true, but I'm saying, it would be good, you could probably reach a consensus as to whether you're done tonight and whether you think you're going to be ready next time or, you know, that kind of thing.
I think, that's what I mean. If you guys want to bring it back for discussion, I'm open to discussion, but it sounds like nobody's ready to commit to anything tonight.
Well, I would agree, but I think if we cleaned up the language and we worked with the provisional or whatever, the conditional signs, which I gotta, I'll be honest with you, I don't 100% understand. That could be the compromise we're all looking for. As long as we maintain grandfathering, maybe not.
I think we just heard that's not true.
You know, you guys were saying we're this close. I think we're as far apart as we can be. I mean, we've got half the village board, and I respect your position, I truly do, but half the village board just doesn't believe in amortizing.
Right.
And half the village board that thinks the ordinance is no good without amortizing.
Can I...
And the village president doesn't want to, he wants, you know, a clear consensus. We're not going to have it, so it's dead.
At the risk of people hurling things at me, I would like to suggest that, one of the things we've never really had is a discussion about what we'd like to accomplish with this, what our philosophy is with a sign ordinance. So that people, people have talked about it because we've talked about this ordinance, and so I think we have an idea of where people stand, but I'm wondering if part of what's getting in our way is we've never really talked about, is there a common feeling about what we'd like to accomplish with this?
And maybe that's the way to, whenever we decide we can handle looking at each other and doing this again. Happy New Year, everybody. Maybe that's, maybe that's, I don't know. That's just something to think about. I don't want us to decide right now, but I'd like to throw out that maybe if we have a discussion about why we have sign ordinances or why we don't, then maybe that's a way to start.
I could tell you one thing that is, I will not support anything that forces our businesses to make changes for signs that they have been permitted and paid for. I understand that there's a sentiment that says, you know, a business can afford, you know, to put $1,500 into a sign. You know what? It's not true. $1,500 is a lot to a small business owner. So that grandfathering is the only, is really the part where I won't move.
Yeah, I don't want, I would prefer not to, I mean, I respect what you've said. You've said, you have not contradicted yourself at all in this conference. I'm just saying that maybe that's something we could think about. When we decide we want to bring it up again, maybe we could have that.
Well, but I have a slightly different concern based on what you just said. Because by what has happened tonight, and we're going back to the 2005 ordinance, that people are saying that they want it enforced, we're going to be doing exactly that.
And that's what's in place right now. And we're saying we want it enforced. That's what I heard you say, you want the 2005 enforced. Well, that includes amortization. I just think we're not ready tonight to decide what our next step is.
We're not going to follow this tonight, so...
Is there anything specific you want me to bring back to the next meeting?
No.
Or are we just going to continue discussion?
More coffee.
No.
At this point.
Renounce, renounce.
Yeah, at this point, I mean, you, you know, if you wanted to, because there's similar language in the 2005.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
About the cattle power and all that.
Yeah, so you have, you have, you know, you have some issues. I mean, at some point, you probably should try to come to some kind of agreement because I don't think, well, you've got, I think four of you have concerns about the, things about the 2005, so you probably should try to get something put together.
Right. I mean, I feel like where we're leaving this at now puts me and my staff at a certain disadvantage. I have sign permits pending that I have sitting waiting for a decision to be made to know whether I need to take them to planning and zoning commission or whether I need to review them. I need to know going forward what businesses I need to notify that now have to bring their signs into conformance. I would like some direction from the board on where I go from here if we are sticking with the 2005 ordinance.
How about we enforce property maintenance first?
I do enforce property maintenance. Thank you very much.
You could have that motion?
Not right now.
No.
Thank you. So you're looking specifically at you have signs pending right now?
I have a sign permit pending and I have it waiting because I knew this was on the board agenda. So if we're not doing anything with this, then I'm going to go ahead and take them to planning and zoning commission because I believe that meets, does that mean before this next meeting?
I think we have an ordinance in place and for new signs, we should be following that ordinance.
I agree.
Yeah, you have to.
We have to.
It just got submitted at the end of last week, so because this was on the agenda, I was waiting to see. So I can move forward with it being on planning and zoning commission agenda for...
I would say yes.
For next month.
In accordance with the 2005 ordinance?
Yes, obviously in accordance with the 2005 ordinance.
It's not fair, boys, to the businesses, not alone to your staff.
Can I make a motion that we maintain the 2005 and grandfather all current signs?
So you would remove the amortization schedule?
I'd like to, I would like to not vote on that tonight.
Well, you made the motion, there's a second, so...
Well, I'm making it friendly a moment that we table that, which comes before the vote, right?
I don't have a problem tabling it, but if you're going to do that, then we don't enforce, we don't enforce the amortization from 2005 until we come to a consensus on the board on what to do.
How can we, can we do that?
If you're just getting a consensus, given policy direction.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not something you want to do generally because you typically don't want to dictate how you enforce, but it's, since you're working on it, you can do that.
Well, then I think we do have to bring it back pretty soon. Because what I hear you say is we can't go on indefinitely deliberately not enforcing an ordinance.
Yeah, well, you don't want to micromanage the enforcement.
Right, but I would, but I don't want these pending.
But as a temporary policy matter, we could direct to, at this point, do not enforce the amortization schedule in the 2005 until the board reaches a consensus.
Can I ask for any of these, I'm sorry, are any of these asking for a projecting sign, whatever they're called?
Blade sign.
Blade sign, thank you. Okay.
My concern with saying it is that Sonia's asking for direction. I don't think it's fair to leave her hanging. Does she enforce them, does she not? So I think that we need to, you know, give her directions. It's only fair to her to do that.
But that's okay.
But the question isn't enforcing new signs. Your issue is with grandfathering existing signs.
She's looking for direction as to what she's supposed to do. So I'm saying, I would like to give her direction. Do we want her, because the topic tonight of should we enforce the current?
Amortization.
Right.
And so I would like to know, she needs to know, whichever.
So that's the suggestion is to not enforce the amortization until...
Correct, but to, but her determination of the planning commission should be directed to follow the rules for new signs that are in the 2005 ordinance.
Right, all the design standards are, those are the ones that are in place.
So is there a consensus?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes. So that's just, for clarification, that's just a temporary thing until an ordinance?
Correct.
So staff is going to bring back an ordinance memorializing that, amending the sign code?
No, that was just direction to staff as to how to...
Yes, to enforcement.
And what will happen next? How long will that last?
Gene, I see where you're coming from.
I wish, I'm glad you do.
Well, and I want to talk to staff, but preface this by saying that in the past, Sonia, not you, in the past, we have lived through a lot of issues with the way we inspect things and things are done. And I can only hope that you're eager enough to enforce this code. Because whether it's a sign ordinance code or residential construction code or any of the other codes that people break in this town, we have not done a good job of enforcing them across the, across the board, right? So if we're going to talk about, I preface this by saying that you're current tenure, but I really think we have to see what it's like to have a code enforcement person with us now and on our team before we go adopting any new ordinances. Let's see how the current ones are enforced.
I agree with trustee Foley.
Except for the amortization or with the amortization? I mean, I guess I'm asking that because let's...
Gene, how do you amortize something? If I'm a lot of business and the sign was part of the business and I got it...
Mike, I...
How do I amortize?
I'm just saying, you want us to enforce the law which includes amortization.
We already...
But if we're going to come back, if we're going to come back, we're just trying to give her direction.
That's fine. I think she's, I think you know.
Yes.
So you're...
But my question wasn't answered. That's a temporary thing?
Yeah.
What happens next?
Staff will continue to work on the language in the ordinance to see if there's a way they've generated consensus among the board.
Will they come back to us to, for a final vote on whether we're going to enforce the 2005 amortization? Is that going to come back to us in the near future?
What's the next one?
I mean, you need to make a decision on, you need to make a decision on amortization. It was a good thing, you know, it's correct that it's not a good idea to have rules in place that you don't enforce. And the fact that the amortization was not enforced creates some issues if you did decide to enforce it suddenly now anyway. So it was good that you were revisiting how to do that, if at all, and to incorporate the fact that there was this lack of enforcement prior and to take all that into account. And so I think that discussion does need to happen relatively soon. And that's why the direction not to enforce has to be temporary because I think, you know, you need to revisit what's going to happen with amortization because it needs to be dealt with. Because it wasn't the code, it wasn't enforced, you need to decide, do we still want it? Do we not want it? And then if you do want it, I think you do need to address the fact that you have this prior rule which was not enforced.
I would suggest that we take that up at our, at our next regular meeting in January and perhaps combine it with the discussion that you suggest that we have. Because it seems to me they go hand in hand.
What's that?
Once we have an idea of what the, you know, what is the goal, what is the concept, what is the underlying philosophy of the, of the sign ordinance, then, then we'll have a better idea, you'll have a better idea of how you want to pursue amortization. So is that okay? We'll take it up at our January 15th meeting.
I'm sure I understood what you're saying, but...
Well, January 15th is the answer to your question.
Okay. So January 15th, we'll have an agenda item to discuss whether to amend the 2005 code to eliminate amortization or to leave it in place and direct it after enforcing. to eliminate amortization or to leave it in place and directly after enforcing it.
Or another option you would have would be to continue the temporary hiatus.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it would be easy enough to, if the majority of the board wanted to remove the amortization and just leave that code in place and let's see if we could just get it enforced, which is what Mike said.
My question, just one last question. Pat made a motion, I made a second. Did we somehow, that is...
It passed.
No, not that one.
Another one?
No, you're talking the motion to table.
The motion to grandfather.
She made that motion, I seconded it. I don't have a problem deferring it on...
So you're saying...
There was a motion to table that then happened. What happened with that motion? I don't remember now.[1709.13][1709.13][laughter]
So your motion was to take 2005, but grandfather everything in?
Correct, and I seconded it. I don't have a problem.
I thought that was the motion. I thought we already decided, he just asked for a, he just pulled us and said it was okay. And then we had old sciences to have, so we had to enforce 2005 code without amortization.
Yeah, that was not a perfect change.
But my question is, do we have to remove that motion?
Yeah, you can withdraw your...
I withdraw that motion.
Okay, the motion.
Okay, you don't want to, okay.
Just want to make sure.
Is that it? Okay. Zach, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no considerations. We have no new business. We do have executive session this evening to discuss collective negotiating matters of public employers and employees and representatives, and to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. So first, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas. I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Executive session is not to reconvene. No final action will be taken. Motion by Mr. Pollak, seconded by trustee Sussman. Please call the board.
Trustee Sussman.
I'll vote first, yes.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
That's me.